I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a city council, the city of Flagstaff, Arizona, combined special meeting and work session. Today's Tuesday, May 26, 2020. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and provide notice that the Flagstaff City Council has the ability to recess into executive session for legal advice, should we so choose to do so. With that, Ms. Solis, can you please leave us in the pledge?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Ms. Whelan, can you please read our mission statement?
Thank you, Mayor. The mission of the city of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you, Ms. Whelan. Can we please have roll call?
Mayor Evans.
Present.
Vice Mayor Shumoni.
Present.
Councilmember Aslan.
I'm here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
I'm here.
Councilmember Odegaard.
Present.
Councilmember Solis.
Present.
Councilmember Whelan.
Present.
Okay, thank you. With that, we're now down to public participation. Public participation for items that are not currently on our agenda. While council can listen and receive the feedback, because the items have not been agendized, council cannot respond back legally to anything that we might hear during public participation. At this particular time, it's my understanding we have two public comment cards for this section. Ms. Drum?
Yes, thank you. The following comment is from Greg Pratt regarding consideration of reopening Flagstaff Community Market to face-to-face commerce. I would like to repeat my appreciation for the leadership provided by Mayor Evans and the city council to our community. In particular, I would like to thank council members Charlie Odegaard and Adam Shumoni for responses to emails regarding my request and rationale for reopening the Flagstaff Community Market to face-to-face commerce. Below, find bullet points in support of my request. One, data. While we have convincing evidence that assisted living communities, jails, and prisons, and bars appear to be hotspots for the spread of COVID-19, there has to date been no evidence that community out-of-doors farmers markets have generated a spread of the disease. In fact, if we look at the data on opening of community markets, both within the state of Arizona and across the United States, there is no evidence that those reopenings have led to any spread of COVID-19. If the mayor and council are inclined to reject this request to reopen the Flagstaff Community Market, I would request that they contact their colleagues in the communities of Sedona, Monds Park, Bisbee Carefree, Buckeye Scottsdale, and Phoenix to determine the rationale that those local entities used in their decision to allow face-to-face community markets to reopen. After obtaining that information, the mayor and council might compare that information and data to the information and data they have used to make the decision to close face-to-face contact with the Flagstaff Community Farmers Market. One characteristic of the Flagstaff leadership and council has been their willingness to be transparent and to communicate to the community the basis for their decisions. I know I would appreciate communication regarding the analysis and comparison of the city's rationale to the rationale of other communities who have made the decision to go forward with opening their community farmers markets. The vendors, local shoppers, and visitors who frequent the Flagstaff Community Market have demonstrated a commitment to healthy living, sustainable, and positive engagement. Groups like these would seem to me to be a model of leadership as we move through a pandemic and post-pandemic environment. By empowering the Flagstaff Community Market community and trusting the participants in that community can engage in safe practices is a course of action that recognizes the power and responsibility of our community. I would urge the council and mayor to carefully consider this long track record at the Flagstaff Community Market, as well as the impact on all the small growers and business owners who have committed themselves to our community over the past 20 years. Greg Pratt. The next comment is Open Streets. My name is Ed Talkington, and I am one of the owners of Pay and Take at 12 West Aspen. COVID-19 has caused unprecedented damage to local businesses, and this requires unprecedented leadership from the council. As an owner of a downtown business, we have been crippled by this forced shutdown. One of the ways that council can help us rebound is to enforce street closures downtown to enable public space that will allow guests to social distance and show that you are a council of action. This has been something that is being enacted all over the world, and there is included in this a link that I will share with council and hopefully can help bring about a quick recovery to downtown. I appreciate your time and consideration, Ed Talkington, Pay and Take. And that is the last comment.
Okay, thank you. We're now down to item number five. Item number five is Review of the Draft Agenda for the June 2, 2020 City Council Meeting. Council, is there anything you would like to review on that particular agenda? Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I had two items. On item 8A, I sent an email to Heidi Hansen, which she actually has responded, but talking about the hypocrisy of Flagstaff not allowing billboards, but us putting billboards up in Phoenix. But again, she did respond to that, just something to think about. And then on 8C, Charlie, I did have some questions about certificates of participation for pension fund liability. And I sent questions to the city manager and Rick Tatter, and I've gotten some of those answers, and I think the rest will probably be added to the packet for the benefit of the whole council. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on council? Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. I have several questions, and I will also put these, I'll just name a few. 6A, Under Consent, Summer Water Project. The contract is going to a company outside of Flagstaff in Colorado. I'm wondering, there's such a minimal difference between the low bid and the next bid, if this is one of those instances that we could use being in a state of emergency to expedite using local firms? So that's my question there. 6C, we're talking about nature conservancy. My question is, what is the cost? Is this land outside of the city limits? And does the conservancy has its own firefighters? And if not, what is the actual cost to the city? Because I believe tonight we'll be talking about our firefighters and them being able to to work safely. The next one, 6E Cartograph. Just wondering why we're going sole source with this? There are many businesses that offer the same product. And I did read the sole source application. I still have that question. 7A, I believe it was the last discussion that we had. We asked for options, or at least I did.
Ms. Whelan?
Yes, one more, Mayor. 8C, the agreement with Stifle. Who is Crane Elementary School District? And what do they have to do with this agreement? And for 8D, have we worked with Greenberg-Torg Vaughn Counseling before? And those are my questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, did you get those questions down, and can those be provided?
I believe so, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. My only comment was for leadership, and that is, you know, heading into the significant stage of a recession plan. I was just wondering how that impacts what it is we're looking at next week, if it impacts what we're looking at next week. So that can be answered now or later. Thank you.
City Manager?
The recession plan discussion will be before you this evening. Next week is the budgets, and they are related, but they are separate standalone items.
Okay. So we can expect an update from you during that particular agenda item? Is that correct, City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that is correct.
Thank you. Is there anything else for this particular item? Review of the Draft Agenda for the June 2, 2020 City Council Meeting. Not seeing anyone, we'll go ahead and move down to item number six. This is a discussion regarding the Coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives Work Plan. Ms. Tahim?
Good afternoon. This is Rose, and Jessica's gonna help me with, she's gonna be my clicker. So I would appreciate that. So basically, go ahead and go to the next one, Jess.
You can see it?
Yes, I can see it, and then you can go, yeah, that's good, thank you. Go to the next one. All right. Yat et to everybody. Greetings to Mayor Evans and Flagstaff City Council. Thank you for this time. I'd like to do a couple of things before we start.
Can you see the second slide, Rose?
Yes, I can see it pretty well. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, good, all right. So first, I'd like to start with the land acknowledgement. It is recognized that the city of Flagstaff is built on sacred lands loved and respected by the indigenous people since time immemorial. Thirteen indigenous nations have known and inhabited these areas before Flagstaff was incorporated in 1928. Flagstaff City Council has further recognized in its proclamation for Indigenous Peoples' Day that it was built and is still being shaped today with indigenous people's knowledge, labor, technology, science.
Excuse me?
Yes?
Okay, there it is. I apologize. The PowerPoint disappeared off our screen. Thank you.
Okay. That it was built and is still being shaped today with indigenous people's knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and commerce. My clans's are Tocheetni No Dye, which is Red Street Running Into the Water, born from Kintla Cheetni, the Red House Clan. My maternal grandfathers are Ashihi, the Salt Clan, and my paternal grandfathers are Hushka Hatzohi. That is yucca fruit strung together. That is who I am as a Dene woman, an indigenous child of the land, and my lineage comes from the Navajo and Ute nations. My name is Rose Tohe. I'm the coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives. I started my work with the city of Flagstaff on February 24, 2020. I also want to give you a little background on a background summary of the Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff and the city of Flagstaff. For council and others who are listening, I'd like to give this summary on how the conversation started between the Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff, which I'll refer to as ICF from here on out, and city council. The conversation, how this conversation impacts this position and the information regarding the work plan to follow. In 2016, in a conversation with then-council member Eva Putzfa, there was an idea to push for the Indigenous Peoples' Day. However, as a result of further discussion within the Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff, it was decided that if this should be the case, Indigenous Peoples' Day had to be meaningful. This led to a series of indigenous organized and indigenous-led and organized community forums in collaboration with the city of Flagstaff and city council. The forums were completed in about seven to eight months. The topics covered were youth and education, homelessness, which is unsheltered relatives, elders, economic development and economic contribution, police and criminal justice, and environmental justice. Then in October 2017, after combing through many months of information and the most voiced themes were gathered, and ICF gave a report on the recommendations to city council. At this meeting, council directed the city manager's office to work with ICF and the indigenous community to work on a five-year strategic plan. The work began, and it was soon realized that this was a great undertaking. So in 2018, ICF asked for assistance in carrying out the tasks. This was also the year council passed the first Indigenous Peoples' Day. The city committed to a part-time temporary position to help with the work, and again, the city manager's office realized a full-time position was needed. This was approved in 2019, and the coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives was hired in February 2020 with the help and input of ICF. So the point is that the coordinator position is a community-driven position. The work plan will have input and feedback to and from the indigenous community and city council. It also serves as a balance for community and council priorities within municipal government. The work plan to be presented is a draft for the full-time position of the coordinator. Next, please. Next. Slide?
Sorry, Rose, it's just taking a minute to advance.
Okay. All right, so this is my big green slide. All right. Okay, so this is the first one, and I really tailored it to the recommendations that were presented to city council. Okay, go ahead and next one. So the first one is the Indigenous Community Cultural Center for Year 1 and 2. And this one for the vision statement completed. So the vision statement for the Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff is that the Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff is committed to nurturing grassroots, indigenous, community-driven change, using ancestral knowledge to promote justice, equity, and sustainability for all. And this refers both to the cultural center, the community cultural center, and the 501(c)(3). And then to identify the location, that is the location at the Mogi on Parks Parcel. And from there, it's just really about the process. City council will hold public meetings at a designated date and time. Coordinator will keep indigenous community informed so community can participate in the public meetings. And then I'm gonna also refer through these slides, refer to myself as coordinator, just to make things easier. And then based on direction of council regarding this property, coordinator will assist ICF in preparation and supplemental of the plan or proposal, and the goal is to lock into this site. There will be there will be an ICF Plan B should council or staff not accept the proposal. And the coordinator will work with city staff to obtain a list of other feasible sites. Partners of city and ICF may play a role in this area. So once locking into this site is accomplished, the remaining steps for Year 1 and 2 will encompass devising and implementing plans for the renovation upgrades or the floor plans, those kinds of things. Under administrative structure, ICF completed and submitted its application to the Arizona Corporation Commission and has been accepted. The Articles of the Incorporated has been published in the Navajo Hopi Observer for three consecutive weeks. The coordinator is assisting in developing the bylaws. So once these are completed, then the bylaws and the 501(c)(3) documents will be submitted to the Internal Revenue Service. So ICF is poised to obtain one or both, the 501(c)(3) and a fiscal agent to start. This will be in place to administer the oversight of the center. Funding funding for the center is to formulate funding ideas with ICF to start basic administering and renovation of the center. A list has been compiled by ICF, and also our city analysts will forward any relevant grants to the group. And then coordinator is also researching other opportunities to utilize for the center needs. And then due to the city's budget shortages forced by COVID-19, coordinator plans to garner information on funding opportunities for both the center and the coordinator's task events and outreach, because I'm pretty sure that my budget will be very, very slim. And then for the year, go ahead and go to the next one. For Year 3 to 5, under the administrative structure, these will be defined by the previous year's accomplishments and additional funding opportunities and further ongoing input from indigenous community. And for the funding, we understand that this budget shortage may be with us for more than one budget season, so the office will continue, which is my office. The office will continue to garner grants and other funding opportunities for the center and the coordinator task and events and outreach as before in the previous years. Okay, next slide. For the Indigenous Commission, there's research being done. So I put on here, it would be concerning the various statutes or status regarding commission, council, or committee. I'm working in compiling that information along with some other research that's already been done, and then also including the legal aspect on what would be the best fit for the city and also the indigenous community. This information will be shared with my supervisor, Jessica Drum, city manager Greg Clifton, and also ICF. Information will be presented to city council in a manner that's recommended by our city manager. Community interface is and engagement is another aspect where I'll be able to assist to formulate discussions and input based on what the research reveals. Then I'll provide information and direction of how input will occur according to city process. And ICF and indigenous community input where there are questions on community accountability, put these plans together with stakeholders in the community, ideas and recommendations from community engagement. And then finally, form the group and structure the work plan for the group based on all this input. So that's what the immediate will be as far as in this year and next. The purpose and composition and to launch will work with the city manager's office to schedule onto the city council's work session to start conversation. There will be options to explore for council. Once presented to city council, this will migrate into discussion and direction defining the purpose. Approval to move forward, which will include vetting the plan and the process regarding the composition. And then form and formalize and launch the group as agreed by council and indigenous community. Okay, go ahead and go to the next one. So for Years 3 and 5, 2, 5, there's always gonna be the interfacing and engagement to define annual goals, which will help to build relationships and strengthen partnerships and draw new ideas from the city and county government. So I put county in here because there's also, we want to explore the opportunity of making this commission, whether it be council or committee, to be more inclusive of the county part. And so we just need to figure out how we can do that. So the community interface and engagement will help us do that and to continue to be an ongoing part of these goals. So this always will include the community accountability and the city accountability, whether it be city and county, and through the standards set for the group and its operations. Okay, next. The next one is the Economic Inclusion and Impact. And this one is about the financing of it. So in the last budget cycle, 30,000 have been budgeted for the Economic Inclusion and Impact Study. So due to the COVID-19, these funds may no longer be available. So, but I guess the question still is, are these funds still available? And then thereafter, you know, we have to find that out. And then coordinator will work with city and ICF to identify sources and resources if there's not to complete this task. This is an important part of the Indigenous Community Forums and specifically noted in the presentation by ICF to city in the October 2017 presentation. And then to utilize and leverage positive outcomes is that when we publish these results, it can provide the indigenous community an alternative lens in which to see our Flagstaff government. This in turn puts more, this provides more input into government for solution-oriented participation. And trust building is an important goal on both sides, so this will really help with building that trust. Create and refine directory of indigenous-owned businesses. Coordinator will work with city tax department for business owner list for this purpose and obtain what is legally acceptable, and work with Chamber of Commerce membership, and then outreach to indigenous community to obtain similar information. And then there was also one where there was a public artist market, where I think that this part is to devise a feasibility study. That means outreach to local artists and gather input from their standpoint for questions and their response for this study. And then create an artist directory form and then work with a work group to formulate the plans for the artist marketplace. Next. So the 3 to 5 year on each of these points is is to, as far as the impact study is concerned and the economic impact study, this is to really continue also to finance and renew this study from time to time. This could become part of the ICF nonprofit. So that's another avenue for that to take. But to always partner to partner with local and regional resources for collaborative efforts as a result of the economic study, to also build funding sources for the projects and events, and then work to recruit indigenous participation on city and county commissions and councils. So this would be a good leveraging tool to have more participatory residents. And then to outreach efforts to announce and plan for elevating indigenous-owned businesses, and then based on the findings as far as the study for the public marketplace, to have the work group, the work group will create and implement an artist-driven market that will reach focused customers, both locally and also from outside the city. So this may come sooner than the third year, but the plan right now is for three to five years in that timeframe and hopefully get a really strong market. Next. The visibility is is one of the asks as far as the presentation recommendations as well. This one, building the visibility of indigenous presence. Right now, through public art is one of the ways and we're and I'm working with the with the beautification arts and sciences through economic vitality within the city of Flagstaff. The first announcement to recruit indigenous artists has gone out about two weeks ago. So that's a very exciting. There's also specific specific budgeting, budget funding for further collaboration with this with with this division in this area. So working with the arts and the beautification arts and sciences to fine tune that outreach and process will be will be ongoing will be going on. And then also information on the name and replacement streets and and place names. So based on forum input, at at one of the meetings, council member Wheeling had introduced a talking point to change Agassiz Peak as well as other street or place names in Flagstaff. And my job is to keep the indigenous community informed of the council agendas, discussions, and public input. So we'd like to build support for within the indigenous community to participate in these discussions regarding this item. And then the one next one is the public advertising of events. The example of an of this, one of the important events is the Indigenous Peoples' Day event. Unfortunately, due to the current pandemic situation, we don't have a guarantee of that there will be a public in person event. And also we might not have the funds, city funding to support this. So based on that, the idea, the Indigenous Peoples' Day Planning Committee will be the planning will be less about the celebration and maybe focus more on the education through virtual videos or educational sessions. So implementing the planning committee and adding more members will help with that to further determine what needs to happen with with this year's Indigenous Peoples' Day. The other, the one of the other part was also the support for Flagstaff Powwow that was brought up through the forums. In order to do this, we need to have more community listening sessions through surveys or other means and also contacting area nations. Then then pull those ideas back and ideas back and then also provide feedback. So those are some things that are still in the works and that will be in the works. Okay, next. So in year three through five, again, there's going to be just the continuation of these goals of the established goals from from year one and two. There's the public arc, which is going to be still ongoing to will continue with artist involvement and then also some of the city departments. And then also the renaming, continue with new buildings and new streets. Continue input with changing street names, clearly with indigenous community input. And then advertising artist marketplace and other cultural and celebratory events. And then as well as community educational and cultural events. List which some of this will be listed under the education portion of which will be the next one. And determine what and determine what other events we need to bring forward so that we we have so that we include not just the indigenous community, but the whole of Flagstaff and surrounding areas. So and then as far as the what comes out of the support for the Flagstaff Powwow, that will depend on what 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 kind of information we get back. And then there'll be plans if there is support for that. Because there are pros and cons from from our our people that have that have that I've talked to regarding the Flagstaff Powwow. Next. Um, this, this is going to be about the the education piece. And this is really about the indigenous, having indigenous history, culture, and contributions. Working with the continue work with FUSD and charter schools to support expanded student curricula on in on indigenous histories, culture, and contributions. This work has already been started and several ICF members have been in conversation with FUSD, the parents and staff to start some of these projects. And then also there is also in there the staff training for city employees and to have and we've started kind of, we've already started some of this. And to engage, we've started engaging in some of these conversations through. And some of them has already happened through participation in Indigenous Peoples' Day, through Native American Heritage Month, and also local reoccurring art shows as well as city and county leadership academies. So these are some things that will will still continue. And these are but also a broader look will, a broader look will be needed at how staff training can occur through the city manager's office and also with community input, indigenous community input. So just strengthening a lot of the county relationships because a lot of a lot of work has already been started with some of the county endeavors. And then includes, but also one of the things that has been occurring was that we should include city partners as well in some of these trainings. And so I thought that was a really awesome idea from one of the staff members. So that's things are that are going to be moving forward and 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 are moving currently. Community sharing and training is just some things that have been that have been occurring already through truth and reconciliation or conciliation events. Again, through Native American Heritage Months, Indigenous Peoples' Day, and then also similar projects with or objectives with the county. So all of these are are on the move and they're happening and we just need to have a little bit more internal as far as a city goes. Next. For year three to five, these are just just continued efforts building upon what has occurred from year one and two. We're building a list of contributing, we're going to build a list of contributing partners, develop an effective training portfolio. And then also just really having to focus on just what are what's our data and what have been our successes? And then connect with the indigenous communities and nations to the city of Flagstaff through, you know, storytelling and the locality of Flagstaff and just better messaging around these area around these these topics. Again, just strengthens relationships. And then replicate all the successes. Next. The next part is regarding public safety. And these ones are one of one of the real one of the special recommendations that have been put forward by indigenous community is public safety. And also, and I apologize, I I should have included including criminal justice. So that is including the courts and other forms of other areas of criminal justice. So this part is really about just keeping keeping the dialogue going with the with the Flagstaff Police Department. And that has been very successful as far as I'm concerned with the communication which you've tried away. And then also starting a conversation with the fire department as well as other public safety entities within the city, including the city courts. And then continue, just really continue the the as far as the thoughtful thoughtful review of public safety is to continue the cultural sensitivity training to Flagstaff Police Department. Continue community conversation and input. And I put example there for with as far as the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission because they really do try to look at things in the border town areas and how things can be the relationships can be made better and and strengthened with the communication and relationships within those the Navajo people, especially in in this case, Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission with the city, with the city of the cities in the border town area. And then also address recruitment and hiring of more indigenous people. The training and education is just to really continue and and review and update. Of course, we we do have a post-certified curriculum, but to add to it and to build on to it is really the focus of what we'd like to do. And then the policy review and indigenous input. And that is to to do an outreach to community, community members, indigenous community members and surrounding nations to to just have a thoughtful review of all that and see what we can do to make policies that are that are congruent with how the city has its mission in protecting all citizens and and then the the different proclamations that were made and just making sure that there's equal justice and protections under the law. Those kinds of things. So those are some really good things that were that 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 I believe are coming and are being worked on right now. Next slide. The next one is for year three to five again. And including again, both the all police, fire, and criminal justice areas to continue that collaboration. And then also having that thoughtful implementation of changes. The continued community conversations and input and the continued joint sessions with tribal governments so that they can have input on some of these areas regarding public safety. Next. The next areas are ones that are a little bit more far off, but there still needs to be some work to do, which is wellness, housing, and transportation. So I put year two on this one because I pretty much probably may not have the may not have time this year to to start on it. But there were, there're going to be some, there're going to be some things that need to happen in the campaign to identify these community based efforts, especially for those that promote healing for the intergenerational traumas. But also to seek out the foundational strengths that we have that that are here and that we rely on as indigenous people. And so that is really about the protection of the sacred from unhealthy and harmful treatment. This is a parent, this is really paramount issue of health according to with our physical, mental, and spiritual health. And for for us as far as indigenous people and and surrounding nations. And the example of that is the peaks and the ecosystems that that surround the peaks and also the Flagstaff area. And then also to the partnership and resources for such things as gardens and elder and youth programs. Those are some things that are very foundational that we draw strength from. And then also to have the partnerships. Okay, for these partnerships, such as the the gardens and the elder programs, to identify and support indigenous organizations to build culturally grounded resources to address traumas. So these are just some of the examples to address the 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 traumas of the intergenerational aspect of things. And then as far as housing is concerned, is just the need to conduct more assessments concerning families, students, and unsheltered relatives to look for solutions regarding the questions coming out of the forums. And the questions are, how can the city of Flagstaff work with indigenous organizations to further support affordable housing for native people? What role can city play in easing the burden of Flagstaff's Flagstaff's restrictive price levels for housing and utilities? So those are some questions that are addressing the affordable housing situations. So those will be more in the future as far as how we're going to be doing that through the assessments. And then to the transportation is just really exploring solutions to these deficits that place particular obstacles in the path of native people who travel between the city and nearby homes, whether it be for work, shopping, family connections, or health services. Next. So on this one, I put three, three to five again. And this is really basically in the area of housing, transportation, I mean, how wellness, housing, and transportation as well through to identify to to identify and in and strengthen all those, all these different areas that we're collaborating on to have the the local and to have local and regional partnerships that are very strong to address to to address these areas. But I think one of the really most important things is to identify resources, whether it be funding at the local tribal state or national levels and bring them to Flagstaff. And these would be the same for all where for wellness, housing, and transportation. So those are some things that I'd be working on in in trying to address some of these recommendations that have been given to the city. Next. The next one is regarding tribal nation meetings and also COVID-19. This is, this is we've, we've scheduled some meetings with Hopi, Wollapie, and Havasupi, but we had to cancel them due to the COVID situation. And and as soon as we can, we're going to, we're going to be re scheduling this hopefully at in person. But the main thing I wanted to just express was that these tribal nations, they're really appreciative of these meetings and they they are happy when I send them an email just to even check on them to see how they're doing. And they're very appreciative that we're that city of Flagstaff is able to do that. So and then as far as the other tribal nations, we're hopeful and to schedule those as well as the city reopens. And so there, it's important to always keep in touch with them and 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 through this office, we can do that. And then with as far as COVID, city through this office, the city has been instrumental in just making sure that that the nations and the local area, they're they're being in contact with with the city. There are updates being made to the council on a weekly basis as much as possible. And then also the city through this office has also been instrumental in connecting in organizations and donations for the relief efforts. So I just want to say that I'm really proud of the city for for being able to have the opportunity for me to do that. Next. Thank you for your time, Mayor Evans and city council members. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Odegaard.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Rose, for the presentation. In previous in the slide earlier, talked about, you know, public art and indigenous community and how we can do that and uplift that in our community. Has there been anything? Has there been anything that's taken kind of traction of try to make something happen along that road concerning public art and the indigenous community?
It has. I believe that I know just working through the city right now with the beautification arts and sciences. We have, we have, I have contacted indigenous artists to be, to participate in that. And I know when I last spoke with Eliza, she had said there was specific, specific funding in their budget for this very thing. And so that's going to be coming down the road as far as I know if things haven't changed. So those are some, some, some solid things that are, that are, that are there.
Okay, thank you, Rose.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Rose. My question is, does the Indigenous Circle reach out to all of the tribes that we have met with? We've met with the, you know, the Havasupai, the Walapai, the Dene and the Hopi. And of course, there's some more tribes too. Are we reaching out? Are we getting participation from all of these tribes or at least a pretty good cross-section? Thank you.
Well, in Flagstaff, we are, we are dealing with the people who do live here in Flagstaff and that's what the Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff is, is kind of concentrating on is the residents that are here and in, and nearby, maybe in county like Doni Park or Williams or things, just a little bit of surrounding areas. So our, so I know that there are members from different tribal nations that live here. And so those are the ones that we, we can, that we can contact. However, through the city, we are contacting the, the actual tribal governments to, to see if they are able to participate with any other things that we're, we're doing here in Flagstaff if they want to. And if they have family here, they're always, they'll be able to communicate with family members who are here. So there are a lot of different indigenous nations that are present here in Flagstaff. Whether, whether it be through the school system NAU or whether they're just living here because of work and whatnot, or because of school, but, but yes, we, we, we're, we're trying our best or I'm trying my best to make sure that everybody has the information that we need, that they need to have.
All right. Thank you, Rose.
I'm gonna stop and take the public comment first, then I'll go back to Ms. Whelan followed by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. This comment is from John Victoria. I, um, he provides a list of comments regarding the program for the Coordinator of Indigenous Initiatives. And he says below, you will find a few. One, at one of the forums held initially at the beginning of the issue, at the beginning, the issue of Kit Carson, Christopher Kit Carson, 1809 to 1868 was discussed. One tall Navajo indigenous gentleman said this, Kit Carson is to the indigenous as Adolf Hitler is to the Jews. This issue needs to be addressed. How can that be accomplished? Two, budget information for the IPD Indigenous Peoples' Day is important. We may have to wait some time before we have a budget that is knowable. Any thoughts here? Three, given the chaotic situation in America, we may, we may not know much when we need to know. Four, how many different indigenous groups live in Flagstaff and how do we solicit their input? Rose's title includes this term, Indigenous Initiatives, so we must include all indigenous, it seems to me. Five, also on June 25th, 2019, the Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff met with a city official to discuss the use of the old maintenance yard for potential future use by ICF. Darrell Marks, one of the per se officials, per se, excuse me, of ICF, stated that we need to consider quote-unquote reclaiming indigenous despite the fact that it would be quote-unquote controversial. His words, not mine. How will the city pursue this issue? We life and, we live in crazy days, predictably for the most part is gone. Thank you.
Is, is that the only public comment card?
On this side of, yes.
Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Rose, for your presentation. A couple of things come to mind. This is a huge task. You have listed, I believe, eight major tasks. And within them, there are many subsets or sub-objectives. And I would really like to hear from council and I, I'd really like to see what are the priorities? So it may not be all seven, or it may be one objective in each one. But I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that so many of these large projects will just create kind of a spin and then a a wearing down of the basic intention. I'd also like clarity between ICF and the commission. You know, typically we have outside groups that participate by feeding information to commissions. Commissions then feed information to council. And, and that is a way that we are making sure we're getting community voice alongside with, of course, emails and phone calls and visiting. But it seems like if ICF is a nonprofit and there is a commission, that those are very separate things that they work together in partnership, but a city commission is a different entity. And that council would, the other thing on, on finances, well, I really support grants and, and those things. You're right, our, our budget is going to be tough. And so that, that action of prioritizing several items rather than a huge list, at least for these next few years, I think will, will enable us all to function on, okay, what are the priorities? What do we need to do next? So that's the comments I have. Thank you for listening.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and Rose. Thank you for the update and all your hard work on this and all the work you've done for the city so far. It's really good to have you on as a member of the team. I, I really appreciate, you know, the different pillars you outlined from economic impact, public safety, the commission, events, education outreach and so much more. And as Councilmember Whelan said, it's really a lot. And as Councilmember Whelan was talking, I, I could imagine what kind of a, you know, small team of people you would need with a budget to really see through a lot of these different points. And so I do have a few questions and also some comments, so thank you, Council, for your patience with me before I even get started to here. But can you just talk a little bit to me about any kind of collaboration that's currently being, that's taking place between your office and Kenlani, NACA and other organizations in town that work with indigenous populations?
Well, I know a lot of the ones that are being, that we're talking about right now is more collaboration efforts and what, what can we, let's sit down and talk. It, it's just hard right now to have a good conversation when this pandemic hit. So a lot of people have not been able to actually, although they're working from home, they're not actually able to, and some are not even working from home. So it's, the, the, that part is a little bit behind as far as, as, as setting something for sure in concrete or semi-concrete. So right now, I do have relationships at NACA. I do have relationships at, with NAU, with the, with the, with the Native American Cultural Center. And we, we have started talking about some of these goals that are under the, under this coordinator position and how we can help with some, with, with getting that collaboration. I think doing, doing the collaboration work and doing, strengthening those relationships is how we can accomplish a lot of these goals. And so right now, there's no mech, no real mechanism in place to accomplish some of these things because everybody has full-time jobs and they don't always have some of these things at their, on their agenda. So if we, if we're able to collaborate with people like, let's say, Kenlani Dorm or whether it be the, the height, the, the school board, then we can actually see some of these goals moving within their own, within their own internal mechanisms. That's the way I see it working. And so right now, the collaborations are being, are being established. And to the extent how much they will participate is still a little bit ways off to see how, to see what their participation level will be.
Okay, that helps. And, and so I'll say like, I really see the commission really being a huge critical piece to kind of pull in all the different groups and hopefully the different, you know, tribes respectively. And I'd really like to see the commission lead the way on the community center. You know, I think that that will be the right approach to keeping things as, you know, neutral as possible, if I can even use that term. And with the new ICF 501(c)(3) formation, I wonder, you know, how ICF is gonna put together their board and maybe they'll apply a similar structure that we apply to the commissions to kind of help ensure that diversity. Cause I understand that we're, you know, only focused with ICF on folks within the city limits per se or around the city of Flagstaff. But I, I hear there's a decent representation in the community. And I think that that could be helpful for us to tap into, to the ICF leadership to create more of that diversity. A couple of their comments. I, I really appreciate your weekly updates. You've been providing counsel on the COVID status on Hopi and Navajo. I think we can potentially start facilitating meetings with other leaders, other, other tribes virtually through Zoom and really kind of like have a system down that works because like we've talked about, we don't know how long this is gonna be before it's really safe to meet. And I think even a virtual meeting is worthwhile with all of council. And I think they could be very powerful and install a good way to like, you know, maintain that connection and support and communication, which is so important, especially today. And then my, my, my last comment, and it's more of a question, is can you talk more about the needs of the indigenous population? Especially the, the unsheltered relatives in our community today who are sleeping in the woods. I've been in touch with a few of them and I've heard about a number of struggles. But I'm, I'm just wondering from your perspective, what, what, what do we need to know today regarding COVID and the vulnerable of the unsheltered population who is indigenous?
Well, that's always a hard conversation and a lot of it, and I'm not an expert in, in, in having to deal with unsheltered relatives because they, they're, they're, they come from all, a wide spectrum of places. And some are, as one of my relatives has said, some come here to work and they, they don't abuse substances and they don't partake of any, they don't have issues with the law, but yet they don't have a home to go to because of their job or their work here in town. And they really don't have the, maybe the credit history to have an apartment, those kinds of things. And so, and so some of the ti, some of the time they're here, they're, they are homeless. And then, then the others, the, the other side of the spectrum is where we have our relatives who are unsheltered, who have a long, long history with, with having a record and substance abuse and all kinds of things that they have to deal with, including the traumas of whether it be intergen, intergenerational or the historical trauma that they have to, that they're dealing with because of, because of the things that maybe their own parents and their grandparents went through because of boarding school. I don't know. But those kinds of things are, they're, they're hard to address. But I think that's where this position is really gonna be helpful in the future in trying to connect those agencies that have the capacity to look at some of these situations where how much of the unsheltered relatives can we help? Like what can we start with? Can we start with having a more robust, a more robust and foundational programs that deal with substance abuse and helping them at that level and including workforce in that. So it, it's really a, a mixed bag. And I, I, I don't know if I can be able to give you a succinct answer to, to that question.
That's fine. And then my, my only thing I'll say in follow-up and then I'm, I'm finished. Thank you, Council, for your patience again. It's just that, bless you. I was hearing from folks that they were struggling to get a clear path to get tested and to get into a hotel. And we can dive into this later. I brought up to the county and I'm, I'm hopeful that we're working on a better track for certain, you know, unsheltered relatives to get into the hotels that are available today. I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much for letting me speak and for your update, Rose. Much appreciated.
You're very welcome, Vice Mayor.
Hi, Rose. This is Coral. I want to say, first of all, thank you very much for the updates that you're providing us when it comes to what is happening on Navajo and Hopi. With regards to COVID-19, those weekly updates are very, very important and very much so appreciated. Trying to understand what it is that our indigenous partners need and how we as the City of Flagstaff can assist. And so I want to say thank you very much for that. And thank you for your overview that you provided council here tonight. It was very insightful to see really the, the program and what it is. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a huge task and it's one that I'm very excited to see that we are advancing on. I do want to talk to council because I want to go back to something that Councilmember Whelan said that I think is important. And I also think that, this was alluded to by the Vice Mayor. In looking at the task that was outlined, I remember when council first had the conversation and we adopted the strategic plan that was given to us by ICF. At that particular time, council was very clear, and I think that we might need to just reaffirm that here tonight, about the importance of setting up the commission. The idea was that we were going to set up a commission that was going to be very diverse in nature. And that commission was going to help drive and help assist with the work program and the implementation of the coordinator, the implementation and the work plan for the coordinator, excuse me, the implementation of the strategic plan that we adopted and the work, the work program of the coordinator. And when you look at the work program that was just, you know, laid out to us, I think the commission needs to be first and foremost on that. I think that we need the commission because I think the commission provides a diversity of, of, of thought and a representation that we said we wanted to get. There is something like seven to nine different indigenous tribes that are indigenous to this area. And we were pretty clear that we want all of them to have a voice or to have a part in the strategic plan and implementing it and moving it forward. I do think one of the cool things that we have been able to with this report here tonight is that ICF has now gotten to the stage where they are going to be their own separate standalone entity. And that was something that council had wanted to see, they wanted to see ICF give their 501(c)(3) status. And then that would allow them to move forward in writing for grants and looking for grants and hiring their own executive director. Having a standalone agent, agency. Definitely, um, they were under agencies that the City of Flagstaff works with when it comes to implementation of strategic plan that we have adopted. But we were also clear that we wanted to work with other groups, other groups um like the Vice Mayor mentioned. Kalani Dorms, NACA, other individuals and other groups that are here. And and again, that leads back to why we wanted the um commission, right? And so I I really think that, uh, you know, Vice, excuse me, um, Councilmember Wieland mentioned that. The Vice Mayor has mentioned that. And so I want to go back and strongly um encourage Council to um the work program that we've heard tonight. To me, the most important element that we need to be working on that really should have been set up um over a year ago is this commission. And then that we have the input of that commission to help us drive all the other elements of this plan. So those are my comments for tonight. Counsel? Have Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, that that is correct what you said. Um. I would like, as you've mentioned, see this commission started so we can hear from this commission. All the work uh programs that were identified, I really don't want to have a say what should be the priority or what should be done. I want to hear it from this commission. And I think we've always said that from the beginning uh with my former colleague Putsova, that it always needed to be heard from the community of what they want um and what our what the community should look like from their ideas. And so um, and so that is my thought. And and thank you, Mayor, for reminding us that that's where we need to kind of go with direction is getting this commission formed. So thank you.
The Vice Mayor followed by Mr. Aslan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify my my comments before and just be crystal clear and say I fully agree with your your sentiment. And I think we should be running most everything we do through the commission. Obviously, I think there's a lot that Rose can do on her own. That's very important and that she should keep doing those things. Absolutely. You know, such as setting up meetings and uh reports and and a lot of the other things as well, but I'd like to see us have that commission in place as a, you know, more or less top priority. And and I'd like to see that commission really lead the way on the the community cultural center. I really think that that it'd be a shame if we wa- moved ahead without the commission in place, leading the charge as one of the bigger projects that they all help to spearhead and and guide. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Rose.
We are going to Mr. Aslan, followed by Mr. McCarthy, followed by Ms. Salas.
Thank you, Mayor. And Rose, thank you for your lengthy presentation, very detailed, very interesting, very exciting stuff. Um, I'm only uh weighing in here to just echo and back up what Councilmember Odegaard has said and and the mayor you intimated at, and so was the Vice Mayor. Um, moving forward, I think that the priority dis- discussion needs to come from the community. And if the commission is the best way to proceed with that and the most expedient way to to get us into an effective conversation on that end, then I'm supportive of that. I s- s- have my own ideas of what I'd like to see happen with with this program moving forward, but I'm really not comfortable even expressing that here. I I think that uh it the the energy and the source and the focus of the um how we prioritize and the new paradigm we're in um needs to come from the community that's going to be served by uh most closely by by these efforts.
Um, Mr. McCarthy?
Yes, I agree. We should set up this commission as soon as possible.
Ms. Salas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Rose, I am sending you a warm, big heart with gratitude for uh for taking the time and energy and, you know, providing us uh your wisdom in moving forward with uh your program. You know, three to five years work plan, it's it truly is comprehensive. And it looks it, you know, from the outset, it can look like an a a Herculean task, you know, given you're a one-woman team. And I do believe, like yourself, in collaboration and partnership within within members of our communities and within within our indigenous um communities. So um I wish you all the best and uh luck as as you embark on on the work plan. And um I am one with um my colleagues on the council is to to constitute the Indigenous Commission as soon as possible. And Rose, anything I can do for you to help you on my part, I'm a phone call away.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Wieland, were you able to weigh into this?
Well, Mayor, I thought I had. I I agree with with my colleagues. I think it all should be funneled through the can the commission and that should be a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. So um I guess I would turn back to the city manager to make sure that um that it was understood what the council's priority is when it comes to this.
Madam Mayor, we we are hearing loud and clear that formation of this commission is a high priority. It has been seen as such uh and has not been shelved. We obviously have a few things on the front burner at the moment, but I want council to know that this remains a priority for staff as well.
Okay, because um it would be council's intention that the work that the implementation of the strategic plan and that the work, the work program for our coordinator would be driven by this commission. Um, I wanted to make one last comment that I thought um might prove to be pro- um problematic in the long run. Um, and it had to do with the uh the Public Works Yard. Um, the way the presentation was made was that the city are, excuse me, we were moving forward with the Public Works Yard with the understanding that it would be an indigenous um cultural center. Um, and while definitely there's those of us on council who are excited to hear that, I would say the majority of council during the conversation, I was excited. There were several of us excited to hear that. Um, the council has decided that there was going to be a community conversation about the center. And so while we move forward in planning for that to be the site of an indigenous um cultural center, I think we need to be very mindful that there's also a broader community conversation that council said they wanted to have. And so we need to make sure that everything is timed where it coincides together. Because it would be awkward to make a decision on the old Public Works Yard and then have a community conversation about what the community wants to see there. So if we're gonna have a conversation, it needs to be a conversation um that's done at the same time.
Our same takeaway from the meeting that occurred.
Yeah, because um you know, we're hearing one thing in the meeting today that I think all of us are excited about. But I also want to remind council that I think it was two or three months ago when we had this conversation, the majority of council decided to go out and have a public conversation about it. And they did not say, yes, this is what we're gonna do with this site. Ms. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the reminder. Um, you what you just said is one hundred percent correct. Um, there'll be probably many pieces coming together concerning the old Public Works Yard, but um you know, the hope is to have room for as many of those um community needs as possible. But again, you are one hundred percent correct that there needs to be a community conversation concerning that site. So thank you, Mayor, for reminding us that.
Ms. Tohe?
Um, okay, I just wanted to clarify um the conversation or the presentation I made regarding the the community um cultural center. And that was really based on the fact that once council decides to move that discussion into for public comment or for public discussion and whatever comes out of that, the ICF is preparing for whatever it is that council will put out there so that our the proposal will be ready for when that is ready to be able to accept.
Okay, so ICF is just getting their proposal ready. So if the council does decide to move forward after the community conversation, that they're ready to apply.
Right.
Okay, that's okay, cool. So I wanted council to make sure the council knows what council direction or remembers what it was. Thank you, uh, Ms. Tohe for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, council, is there anything else with this particular item? Okay, not seeing anything. We're gonna go ahead and take a a nine-minute break. So we'll be back at uh four thirty. Thank you.
...with the Downtown Transfer Center. So I think we need to be flex- in master plan states.
And and I agree with you a hundred percent. And therefore, that's why we're having this this discussion. Uh, you know, I did a little background as I'm sure you have. Uh, there are ways to do pocket parks that are minimal uh maintenance and some pretty exciting ideas. So I would like council to help me take this a little bit further and make sure all of our neighborhoods are being able to access open space. Thank you.
I see the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and and thank you, Councilmember Wieland, for bringing this up and bringing this to our agenda and to our attention. And Amy, thank you for for being here with us and all you do for the community. Um, a couple of questions for you, Amy. Um, how large is the Tree Park? I think is what it's officially called.
The Jim McCollum Park, or otherwise known as the Tree Park, that would be under two acres in size.
Okay, because I think in how much how much does it cost the city? Or what can you tell me about the, you know, maintenance that a park like that takes from for from the city?
A park like the uh the park that we're referencing, Vice Mayor Shimoni, you know, that's really a mowing operation. There are some picnic tables, there's irrigation, obviously underneath the turf. And then there are some concrete sidewalks as well as trees and some shrubs that park staff do maintain. So the the largest maintenance aspect there at that specific park would be the mowing operation and the irrigation maintenance.
Okay, so not not a whole lot of effort, although still significant and noteworthy. Um, so I guess, you know, I'll I'll just share my comments. And that being that I totally agree with Ms. Wieland in that, you know, I'd like to see more of these pop up around Flagstaff. Um, obviously, each one will be a little bit different in character and might have different amenities and might even have different costs for their maintenance and upkeeps. But I would like to see this be something we could at least consider moving forward versus something that's just off the table. Um, and yeah, I just think that that Tree Park has really provided a large benefit to that neighborhood and to the the community at large. And I could just see that being the case for any neighborhood that has a similar type of a park. Thank you very much.
Other members of council? Council, we're looking for you to weigh in. I'll go ahead and jump in line as I wait for the other members of council. Um, and I would say that I'm excited to have um this come back to uh council for discussion. Um, when this was changed in two thousand and thirteen, I was in the minority at that time. Uh, I truly believe that it's important for every neighborhood to have access to a park. Um, and I look forward to seeing how we can create those spaces um in the other neighborhoods that do not have those spaces. I understand that there is a cost um to uh these types of facilities. I would say that these types of facilities do not necessarily have to look the same. And I think that's what the Vice Mayor was saying in every neighborhood. It might be that you have an open space or a park that doesn't have any grass in it at all. It just kind of depends on what it is that neighborhood, that community is interested in seeing. So I look forward to having these types of spaces in each neighborhood. Mr. Aslan? Uh, Mr. McCarthy?
Well, and the reason I just broke in is my little function where I tell you uh that I want to make a comment doesn't seem to be working. I hit enter like three times and nothing happened. So shall I go ahead?
Please.
I, it's probably a good general policy to not add a lot of new, very small parks because the cost of uh maintenance per, you know, usable units, whatever that means, is probably not good. However, I think from time to time, there may be uh times when it does make sense. So I think uh when it does make sense, council can get into it and uh make a recommendation that we do it. But that doesn't mean every time one comes forward, we it would have to be kind of a a weighing the merits versus the cost. So those are my thoughts, and I'm sorry this little function doesn't work. It'll probably work next time I boot up. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Salas?
I, oh.
I'm sorry, Mr. Aslan. I'm gonna go Ms. Salas, and I'll go to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that this discussion and um for Councilum member Wieland uh for bringing this up. I think it's time to um revisit and review the the City of Flagstaff Parks and Recreation Master Plan and um consider uh the possibility of um of building pocket pocket parks or neighborhood parks and uh of course cognizant of the the high cost of maintain- of maintenance. But also be open to the possibility of uh exploring into public pa- private partnership, like the the city can build, you know, a a neighborhood park and then partner with a nonprofit to maintain the park or facility. Thank you.
Mr. Aslan?
Yes, Mayor, reporting to you from my mini pocket park that is my backyard. I wish it was three acres large, but I'm enjoying the birds and the trees out here. Um, I haven't had much to say because I I don't have any dissent on this issue. I'm all in favor of pocket parks. Uh, I think it's absolutely imperative and responsible of the rest of council to be mentioning cost considerations. And of course, the devil's always in the details. There's a there's other things to consider. Zero escaping um considerations, water conservation, uh making sure that we're sticking with the aesthetic of the neighborhood and and getting public input. Um, but all all those things will will come out of the the process.
Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I always remember the the quote from uh Mr. Ed Dunn. I think he had served on the Planning and Zoning Commission that in his mind, a pocket park could be a bench. And um and I always remember that, that how important that is um that we have a sense of community um even with just a bench. Um, you know, so I'm in favor of looking at that. Um, again, as you mentioned, Mayor, a little concerned about um funding uh for anything new or or expanded of anything, but I'm okay with uh wanting to at least take a look at the master plan and see where things can be added, where it makes sense and where dollars can be identified at some point in the future. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so um city manager, does that help with direction?
Madam Mayor, thank you for a thoughtful discussion. My big takeaway, and it's it sounded fairly unanimous by the council, is that we uh take a look at the master plan and identify possible areas for updating, including the pocket park. Uh, I'm assuming there may be other areas that are also of interest, but at least uh the takeaway is to start that process. I'm assuming there may be other areas that are also of interest, but at least the takeaway is to start that process.
Yep, that's what I heard. Okay, we'll move on to the next one. The next item would be item number eight. This is a discussion in possible direction, upcoming city permitted events.
Madam Mayor and council, I'm glad to kick this off if you like.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I do not believe we have materials for council on this. I think it was a late inclusion in the agenda. But a timely one. And what is driving this specifically? Are the permitted events that that start taking place this time of year and into summer and toward the end of summer and into fall. Specifically, I'll call out the Fourth of July, which is the next big holiday, of course. And it is time, we think, at the staff level, for council to at least further the discussion or take the discussion to a greater depth of detail, I should say, as to how we are approaching these permitted events. Specific to the Fourth of July, plans are being made, and it's now several weeks out, only several weeks out. And so we're at a point where if there is a decision to change those plans and in some fashion scale back or suspend the event, I think this is a timely discussion. We apologize for putting it on the agenda and throwing it right into your laps. But it's there's a lot of inquiry coming in about this and other related events. I think it's a little bit easier to at least consider things that are scheduled for fall, you know, September, October. We just heard from our indigenous coordinator, the reference to the Indigenous Peoples' Day, and that occurs in October. We have a little bit of time on on those, not a lot, but we don't have a lot of time on the Fourth of July and other things that may be occurring midsummer. So we thought we would at least like to start that discussion, Mayor.
And I appreciate it. Thank you so much for starting it. I know we have public comment cards on this item, so I'm gonna go ahead and go to Ms. Drum, and then I'll bring it back to us.
Thank you, Mayor. The first public comment that I have on this item, sorry, I was making sure I've got the right item up here. Hold on, sorry, give me one one moment. I accidentally closed that. It reads, hello. We were notified that permitting would be discussed at this meeting. The City of Flagstaff has said that the Flagstaff Farmers Market is usually held every Sunday in the city hall parking lot would be able to open after fourteen days of declining COVID cases. Please note that the Public Health Department showed two weeks of declining new case rates across Coconino County in their report issued Saturday. We will be approving our request for managed and smaller markets now that this trend has occurred. Please provide us information as to the status of our application. Thank you for your time and consideration in this manner. Think sincerely, the Flagstaff Community Market Team. And my apologies because I realized that a the comment that I read earlier, and I can reread it if you would like, regarding the the comment from Greg Pratt regarding the reopening of the Flagstaff Community Market could have fit under this item as well. Would you like me to reread that or send it to council for reference?
Um, you can reread it. That's fine. Oh, no?
Nation, actually, Mayor, this is Sterling. I would recommend you reread it.
Okay, please go ahead and reread it.
Okay. The following comment is from Greg Pratt regarding consideration of reopening Flagstaff Community Market to face-to-face commerce. I would like to repeat my appreciation for the leadership provided by Mayor Evans and the city council to our community. In particular, I would like to thank council members Charlie Odegaard and Adam Shimoni for responses to emails regarding my request and rationale for reopening the Flagstaff Community Market to face-to-face commerce. Below find bullet points in support of my request. One, data. While we have convincing evidence that assisted living communities, jails and prisons and bars appear to be hotspots for the spread of COVID nineteen, there has to there has to date been no evidence that community out-of-doors farmers markets have generated the spread of the disease. In fact, if we look at the data on opening of community markets, both within the state of Arizona and across the United States, there is no evidence that those reopenings have led to any spread of COVID nineteen. If the mayor, two, the mayor and council are inclined to reject this request to reopen Flagstaff Community Market, I would request that they contact their colleagues in the communities of Sedona, Munce Park, Bisbee, Carefree, Buckeye, Scottsdale, and Phoenix to determine the rationale that those local government entities used in their decisions to allow face-to-face community farmers markets to reopen. After obtaining that information, the mayor and council might compare that information and data to the information and data they have used to make the decision to close face-to-face contact with the Flagstaff Community Farmers Market. One characteristic of the Flagstaff leadership and council has been their willingness to be transparent and to communicate to the community the basis for their decisions. I know I would appreciate communication regarding the analysis and comparison of the city's rationale to the rationale of other communities who have made the decision to go forward with opening their community farmers markets. Three, the vendors, local shoppers, and visitors who frequent the Flagstaff Community Market have demonstrated a commitment to helpful living, sustainability, and positive engagement. Groups like these would seem to me to be a model of leadership as we move through a pandemic and post-pandemic environment. By empowering the Flagstaff Community Market community and trusting that participants in that community can engage in safe practices is a course of action that recognizes the power and responsibility of our community. I would urge the council and mayor to carefully consider this long track record of the Flagstaff Community Market as well as the impact of all the small growers and business owners who have committed themselves to our community over the past twenty years. Greg Pratt. And that is the last comment on that item.
Okay, so there's no more public comments? Ms. Drum, is that it?
Sorry, I hit mute too quickly. There are no more public comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Aslan, yes, I am going to call on you to start the conversation. Mr. Aslan?
Yep, I was on mute. Mayor, I'm I'm copying down a URL right now I'd like to send out to the rest of council and the public on the chat. So give me just a second to paste that down, and then I'll be able to focus on my comments.
Okay, I think that when you send out that URL, I'm not sure how we would get that to the public, other than you might have to read that into the record.
Okay.
Would that be correct, City Attorney?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, I'm ready to send it out.
Okay.
So HTTPS colon slash slash COVID nineteen dot healthdata.org slash United dash States dash of dash America dash Arizona. This is a website that I was very interested in sharing with everyone on council that my wife actually found today. And it's from the Institute of Health Metrics and Evaluation, the the IHME, which is an initiative that assembles and curates and analyzes public health data. And it's out of the University of Washington, so it's very reliable. And I think it's very relevant to bring this up to you guys right now during this conversation. Because there are several interesting visualization projects on the website about COVID infection rate and death rate through the summer. And you can get it down to state level. So what I've sent you is the Arizona information. And, you know, since it's a production projection, it's it's based on current models, and it's not clear to me what all of the assumptions of those models are. So bear that in mind. But you will see at the top of the page that it the project assumes that schools remain closed through August fourth, but that other restrictions such as business closures, restrictions on gatherings and and such, and stay-at-home orders ended in or the state ended, starting in mid-May. There's one visualization that shows expected rates of infection over time until August fourth and the expected death rate per one hundred thousand people over time and per day. And both show Arizona emerging as the highest relative infection rate and highest death rate by August, when most of the rest of the country has the virus more under control. The numbers are not enormous. So, for example, projected infection rate in Arizona by August fourth is down to sixty-six new infections per day. That's per one hundred thousand people. And the death rate is down to point eight six deaths per day per one thousand people in August. But those are the highest rates in the country. And, you know, I I just think this is a good moment to introduce a reliable dataset like that into the conversation as we're as we're preparing to discuss which openings and closures are before us. It's my personal opinion, it's probably no surprise after all the preamble I've just given you, that I think that anything that's under our power to control in terms of whether we're opening the public up to gatherings, we should take the step of not allowing those gatherings to occur. I just think it's the responsible, science-based, peer-reviewed data approach that needs to happen. And I will tell you as a parent, and I know my wife will echo this, you know, anything that that we can do in in by sacrificing staying at home and and not participating in in larger gatherings right now. The goal for me is to make sure that my kids get to stay in school for the fall semester. And I'm sure that's a shared goal among lots of people. And anything we can do to maintain that reality, I'm willing to sacrifice a lot in order to to get that result. And, you know, underlying that really is, again, public safety and just the forward momentum we can build in terms of reopening safely in a mitigated way.
Thank you, Mr. Aslan. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Aslan, for that. Mine, I just opened up that website. It looks like it's Arizona-specific, but it doesn't break down into county, which is a little bit concerning, just because every county is so different in the state. And that's been one of my, go ahead.
Well, Vice Mayor, I didn't want to interrupt you, but I did have a comment specific to that, you know. And yes, the resolution of this data doesn't go far enough for for us to be able to make really informed decisions about our community that we represent, right? But, you know, and what I'd like to say on the record is that I know a lot of folks are sort of issuing all this data and talking about how it's a reservation problem and not an Arizona problem. And until we can really drill down on the data, I think that's kind of a moot point. And even when we do drill down on the data, I don't think that those kinds of distinctions are relevant. You know, the reservation is in Arizona, and the reservation is in northern Arizona, and Flagstaff is a major border community for the reservations. And to the extent that this is a reservation problem, it's also a northern Arizona problem, and it's definitely a Flagstaff problem. And that's just needing the naysayers where they're starting from at their faulty logic. I think this is absolutely a Flagstaff problem and an Arizona problem in general. And there's absolutely no reason for us to be parsing this out to what's happening on the reservation versus the rest of Arizona. That's an us-them approach that I have no patience for. And the the virus doesn't really consider those distinctions either. So as far as we can get with the data, and in this case, you know, the data we're getting is state-level. We do have good countywide data from Coconino County. And there are real challenges to resolving that data any further than we can already get it. And there are, you know, justice issues and and legitimate concerns around trying to get to drill down further. And we're gonna we're gonna introduce artifacts and inconsistencies anyway if we try to do that because of where the data sources are coming from. Some of them we have access to, some of them we don't. So, you know, we gotta work with the information that we have. And the information that we have, which is reliable, is very clearly telling us that Arizona is poised to be one of the worst places in the nation when it comes to new infection rates and new death rates. And both of those should be considered, you know, together, but also independently. Both of them are bad. Even if you live after you've gotten coronavirus, we're seeing all sorts of evidence of major health problems that infected people are going to be have to deal with for the long term. And we have, whenever we have the authority to do something about this, I think we need to act according to the science and be responsible to our community and to all of our families.
And I'll just jump back in, if that's okay, Mayor.
Yeah.
Totally.
Councilmember Aslan, I appreciate your comments, and I agree with you, you know, and I've read similar things about Arizona being one of the worst with handling COVID and and the projected numbers in the future. And I bring it up just to say that, you know, the Coconino County, if you look at the death rate per one hundred thousand residents, it's about forty-six currently, which is very similar to the Navajo Reservation. And basically, yeah, like as you've said, you know, this virus doesn't see borders, doesn't see races, doesn't see anything. It just attacks human life. And what happens to people on the reservation happens here in Flagstaff, and we're all connected in this. So, you know, given how our culture struggles with social distancing and wearing a mask, et cetera, et cetera, as we're seeing today in our in our public, you know, reality, we know that social distancing is key. And so whether it's a Fourth of July rally or a baseball team gathering or a farmer's market, you know, if if we can't, you know, guarantee social distancing practices are in place and folks are wearing masks, it just takes one person to spread it to the whole group, and then we have another fire to put out in our community that will take lives, you know, quite frankly. So I give everyone a, you know, a sense of where I'm at with this. I definitely think that the Fourth of July parade is very optimistic, and I have I have very strong doubts that's realistic at all. When it comes to the farmer's market, I do really, you know, have concerns for the local farms and for the individuals of our community who will benefit from receiving quality local food. That being said, you know, I I think that although other communities around the state might have moved ahead with this, that doesn't mean we should. And that we should really come up with a plan that, you know, if we do allow for, you know, the farmer's market specifically to open back up, we do it a way, you know, like like what San Diego has done, whether really limit exposure, limit the number of folks coming in, really have like strong educational campaigns at the beginning, at the front and throughout the the whole market to show six-foot barriers. They have a pole that shows people how far six feet apart is and and requiring everyone to wear a mask. And the last comment I have, Mayor, is just that, you know, what we've seen in Arizona and across the states is, you know, just like the light switch approach at times, or turning things on and turning them off. And where I'm from in Israel, they've done a much more phased approach when it comes to reopening, and especially specifically on sports. So they've really kind of gone from, you know, total isolation to no more than ten people allowed to play at a time. Or even, you know, they have a phased approach. And the reason I bring this up is we should consider something similar, where we have an intentional phased approach that makes sense for how we should reopen and take things slowly and progress, just like all of our other guiding documents. And I'd be curious to see us implement something like that locally to have a guiding plan for how to reopen when it comes to like, you know, team sports, you know, public events. So hopefully, I made myself fairly clear, and I appreciate the time.
I want to jump in before Ms. McCarthy, and this might be a question for legal. But I want to be very, I want, I think it's important for we for us as council to be very clear with what we have control over and what we do not have control over. So when it comes to the reopening concept, really, that has to do with city property. You know, city facilities, city property. You know, city facilities, city property. Um, the governor, through his executive order, will, will determine how our state and other things open. And I just need to make sure that that's clarified through legal.
Mayor, this is Sterling. That's correct.
Okay, so when you talk this, when you talk Vice Mayor about a plan, it needs to be very clear that whatever plan you're talking about has to do with city property and city, um, facilities. And it does not have to do with the broader city of Flagstaff, because that is under the control of the governor.
Mayor, you're a hundred percent correct. I fully agree, and that was where my mind was at as well. And so everything I'm saying is all through the lens of within local control that we have, which is city properties, city permitting, et cetera, et cetera, but very limited in, in the bigger, grander scope.
Uh, we're gonna go to Mr. McCarthy and then Ms. Collins.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think your request is that each council member can weigh in on the subject. Uh, sounds like somebody's already got the virus. Anyway, um, as far as the parade, I think the Fourth of July parade comes to mind. It seems that that is probably problematic, uh, because the people, it'd be impossible for people to stay six feet apart and watch the parade unless, like, hardly anybody went. But I don't anticipate that happening. So we probably should not have the parade this year. As far as grocery stores, yes, we're leaving the grocery stores open because people have to eat. Uh, now, as far as the farmer's market, that's kind of in the middle, you know? Um, I'll let the mayor make the call on that one, but, uh, I guess when in doubt on city property, um, we should be conservative. And, you know, my gut feel is that this thing, people are pretending that it's almost over, but it's not. In the projections that I just looked up, I opened up this, uh, website that Mr. Aslan, uh, referenced, and it shows things getting worse, not things getting better. And so even if they just stay the same, I think we need to be conservative. Does that answer your question, Mayor?
Yes, that's good direction. Um, we're gonna go to the city attorney, followed by Ms. Collins. Um, city attorney?
I appreciate that, Mayor. And Councilwoman McCarthy, as a follow-up, um, to what you mentioned, um, as far as the market or any city property, I, I want to make sure, to reiterate that, uh, it, it is actually the council that determines what happens with city property. The last couple of times we've had a COVID update, it has been extremely clear where the council is on this, and the direction from council to staff, and, and I believe the mayor has been parroting that direction with respect to city property. But I just want everybody to keep in mind that city property, um, is being governed at the, the direction of council, not just the mayor alone. I want to make sure that's clear.
Uh, yeah, thank you for that clarification. And I think when people are talking about opening farmer's market, are they talking about the parking lot just west of City Hall? I presume that's what they're talking about. And if so, that, that's clearly city property.
Um, I think there may need to be clarity about that as well, and perhaps I go back to the city attorney. Um, because we're, we're, we're acting as if the farmer's market is not open. You know, the farmer's market is open in our west side parking lot. They are open under a modified, um, I guess a modified opening, where it's pickup and delivery. Um, because they're on city property, and we have said that we want to see a reduction in, in cases and a reduction in the liability that we would have. But at any time, the farmer's market is able to go to a different location that is not city-owned and open however they choose to open. Is that a correct statement, city attorney?
Yes, it is, Mayor.
Okay, because I, I think that there's some confusion about, um, the city not letting the farmer's market be open, and that is not what is happening at this particular time.
I appreciate, I appreciate the, uh, clarification.
Likewise, this is Sterling again. I appreciate the clarification. It is solely with respect to city property that I was speaking.
Okay. We are going to go to Ms. Collins, followed by Mr. Odegaard.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yeah, I'd like to zoom in to, you know, the, the topic of upcoming city permitted events and the, the immediate, um, uh, event that we need to address is the Fourth of July parade. Um, which the city, um, which the city issues permit to happen because we close, the streets are closed and, um, and sidewalks as well. So, let me propose to, uh, wait until June fifteen, see how the numbers are locally, I mean, of course, I mean countywide in terms of, of, um, COVID-nineteen positive, um, testing results. And if, if by June fifteen, there's, there's data that establishes a fourteen-day decline, you know, you know, perhaps consider moving on, moving forward for the parade to happen. If there's no evidence of a fourteen-day decline by June fifteen, then, uh, I think we have, uh, we have the authority to make a decision and, and cancel the event. Or the permit to hold the event. May please correct me if I'm wrong.
I, I guess I want to go back to the city attorney, because it's not the, it's not, um, we're canceling the event. It would be whether or not we issue a permit for, the street closure permit. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, yeah, we have nothing to do with the event. The event is not a city of Flagstaff event. It's whether or not we would approve the street closure for the event.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you for that, uh, uh, crystal clear clarification. It's, we have the authority in issuing permits for the event to happen.
So I want to go back to the Vice Mayor, who had a clarifying statement. Then I'm gonna go to Mr. Odegaard.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add that, you know, I, I saw today that Santa Cruz River Farmer's Market down in Tucson has a nice effort with a drive-through market that seems pretty fairly organized. Obviously, I, I haven't spoken to anyone from that market or been there myself, but it just seems from what I've seen online that they, they're doing what they can, and they're taking it in stride versus, you know, really trying to open up. Um, but I wanted just to mention that, and I also wanted just to mention to the group, you know, again, like, you know, Councilmember Aslan was talking about with the, uh, our, our native partners and communities, there's extra sensitivity that we need to keep in mind, and we need to really keep them in mind in our decisions because they are some of the more vulnerable to this, and absolutely seen how it's been hit pretty darn hard. And, you know, we need to keep in mind that most everything that we allow for here has ramifications out there, and that we're very much connected at the hip. Thank you, Mayor.
We're gonna go to Mr. Odegaard.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to, to receive some legal advice.
Is there a second?
Second, Jim McCarthy.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by Mr. McCarthy to go into executive session to receive legal advice. Um, Mr. Sterling?
This is Sterling. Before you call for a vote on that, I just want to make it clear, this current format of the meeting, we're open to everyone. To go into an executive session, the city clerk or assistant city clerk, Ms. Bobar would have to send a separate invite, uh, or call each of you separately into a different meeting that is not available to everyone else. Uh, I just want to make sure everyone understands that. You will have to leave the current council meeting we're in and go into that other meeting, or be called. Which one would be easier? Stacy.
I, I, I have a question. Um, would it be easier for us to leave this meeting, go into our other executive session, use that link to go back to that meeting, to have this executive session?
Mayor, I'm unfortunately not able to get into that executive session since Stacy Salzberg set it up.
Okay.
Or Mayor, I have a suggestion. Maybe they can invite can be sent out later, and then we can do that, uh, postponed or, uh, postpone or delay this agenda item until later, until we have that executive session, meeting.
I would say we could go on a break now. It is, uh, five fourteen, and that perhaps within the next ten minutes, um, there could be an invite sent out, so we can go into that. Would that work?
That works. We can get it figured out and let you know.
Okay, so let's go ahead and go on break. Now is, uh, five fourteen. We're gonna be on a ten-minute break. When we come back, we are gonna go into executive session. We need to finish the vote on that. We'll have our executive session, then we will, um, come back to this meeting. So there was a motion by Mr. Odegaard, with a second by Mr. McCarthy. Is there any further discussion? This is to go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. So we hang up on this call. Is that correct? Sorry, I apologize for that.
You are set.
Okay, do we have, uh, the quorum back?
McCarthy's here.
Four, so we do have four, five.
I'm here.
Six. So we have another public comment, um, on this particular item. I'm gonna take the public comment. Then I'm gonna ask council, um, to, we need to get to direction. Um, Ms. Drom.
Thank you. The public comment reads as follows. The Chamber's Fourth of July parade is a hallmark event in our community. Understanding current circumstances, the Greater Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce has prepared new parade best practices and protocols, which will be implemented throughout the 2022 event, to include hand sanitizer, hand washing stations, hand sanitizer at staging, social distancing during staging, and during the parade itself. Live streaming for the event for those who wish to enjoy from the home, and much more. The event itself, as part of the Fourth of July weekend, is a huge positive economic impact for downtown retailers, hotels, and restaurants throughout our community. Businesses who have been particularly hurt by the recent halting or curtailment of business operations, much thought and review should be given before there is a decision to not allow this event to move forward. Sincerely, Joe G., Senior Advisor, Public Policy, Greater Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce.
Is there anything else?
Actually, he just sent one more comment, um, that I can read out. Sorry, just came in when I finished that comment. I'll read one more. Um, it is titled COVID-nineteen Sensitive Protocols 2020 Chamber of Commerce Fourth of July Parade. Overall Parade Operation. Given the global pandemic, the Greater Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce has upgraded operational standards for the 2020 Fourth of July parade event. The parade will occur on Saturday, July fourth, and include the following improvements. Staging, new guidelines. Past parades have far exceeded a hundred entries. So that we may meet current social distancing guidelines, the 2020 parade will have a limited number of entries, thus providing increased social distancing at parade staging and throughout the event. Hand sanitizer will be available to parade participants at staging check-in. Hand washing stations will be available at the parade staging areas adjacent to the porta-john locations. Increased volunteers per staging block will oversee and assist parade participants with meeting protocols. The parade, new guidelines. Parade participants are prohibited from passing anything from their parade entry to the public during the 2020 parade. Parade participants will be faced at spaced, excuse me, at fifteen-foot intervals. Increased volunteers per staging block will oversee and assist parade participants with meeting protocols. Crowd spacing for those in attendance will be strongly recommended and promoted leading up to and throughout the event. Hand washing stations will be available along the parade route. Online viewing via live-stream broadcast opportunities will be provided. Cleanup, new guidelines. In addition to the Chamber's numerous guidelines for parade cleanup, volunteers will have available for use masks and gloves and trash picker tools. Joe Galley, Senior Advisor, Public Policy for the Greater Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce. And nothing else has come in.
Okay, thank you. Um, so with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to council, so we can get some direction. Um, I'm gonna go back, uh, I believe we got direction from Mr. Aslan. Mr. Aslan, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, I think I already provided my thoughts on this, you know? This has been really hard. Um, I, uh, started learning through the Flagstaff Local Campaign just how much money I was spending a week going out to restaurants in Flagstaff. Um, my family, my wife and I, we really enjoy going out to eat. We enjoy hanging out, uh, out back at the Annex. We enjoy hanging out at Mother Road Brewery and other places around town. Um, I would love nothing more than to go enjoy another Fourth of July parade and represent city council with the rest of you in your fancy red, white, and blue outfits. Um, and enjoy the public. And watch fireworks with a big group of people. But I just don't think we're there yet. Uh, the science does not bear that out. I think the situation here in Arizona, um, the best projections we have, and there's a lot of noise in the data, so, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll see, but the, the best projections that we have show that we're not going to be in a place where we should be facilitating an event like the Fourth of July parade by July fourth. And it pains me to say that. I have, uh, it's, it's, it's a very regretful situation. But we are trying to, um, practice what we preach too. And while we're asking folks to wear masks and stay socially distant and do all these other things, I think would be irresponsible for us at this point to even hold off on making this decision another couple of weeks. I think we have enough data to make the decision now, and I think that sends a stronger unified message to the residents of Flagstaff that the COVID situation remains very serious, and that we still have a lot of work to do, um, before we get the numbers down enough for long enough to change our, um, momentum. So I, I hope that, um, direction is pretty clear. Uh, this is obviously something we should revisit often and frequently over the summer. But as of right, you know, and another, um, thing too, you know, I don't know who wants to, uh, wait to build their parade float with only two weeks' notice. I just think logistically, this is a decision we, we have the capacity to make now, and we should go ahead and make the decision. And it's a very regrettable one. It's one I don't relish making at all. Um, quite the opposite, but I think it's the decision that we need to make.
Can you stop and weigh in on whether or not we want to use, um, whether or not the City of Flagstaff wants to be a sponsor on, um, events that, um, bring in large groups of people, um, even if it's on private property?
I, you know, I, I think, I don't think the situation has changed at all, given that, um, scenario. Uh, we need to be sending a strong message as a unified body that we're very concerned about what the data are showing, and that we are going to stay the course right now for the good of the public safety. So anything, like I, I've said all along today, anything that the city personally has management decision-making over, we need to be sending a consistent message that social distancing needs to occur, and we should not be allowing gatherings. Um, so I, I mean, I could keep rambling on about it, but I, I, I think it's pretty clear where I stand.
Okay. We're gonna go to Mr. McCarthy, followed by the Vice Mayor?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would like to make, uh, two types of comments. One specifically about the Fourth of July parade, and then secondly, uh, a more general comment. Um, I do really appreciate that the Chamber of Commerce has done what they think they should do, as much as they can do to, uh, provide safety for participants and observers for the Fourth of July parade. However, um, I don't think that those, uh, proposals that they just got read into the record, um, are adequate. Um, I don't think- I don't think the virus is typically, uh, conveyed by having dirty hands. It's more conveyed by people talking to each other, people breathing, people singing, you know, going breathing even. And, um, I think it's completely impractical to try to keep people separated for a parade like this. I would anticipate that lots of people would show up like we saw over this Memorial Day weekend at pools and, and, uh, other public places. So therefore, I think that it's my best judgment that we not hold a Fourth of July Parade this year. And to talk to the more general question, I believe that the city should not approve events, uh, that are on city property if there will be large groups. And if there's large groups, we should not approve sponsorship by the city and we should not provide permits if required on, even on private property. So, um, that's a very conservative approach, but I think at this point in time, which means now, um, that's the prudent thing to do. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Odegaard?
I, I thought it was the Vice Mayor and then I.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on real quick. Yep, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Odegaard. Appreciate that. Um, thank you, Mayor, of course. Um, so I had a question for staff, you know, I, I, can someone tell me more about what the farmers market was proposing? I understand that, you know, what the farmers market has looked like in the past, but can someone tell me more about what they were hoping to do this time around?
Hi, everyone. This is Rebecca Sayers. I'm actually going to ask John Wilson, our Recreation Manager, to answer that question, please.
Uh, yes, thanks, Rebecca. Uh, thanks, Mayor and, uh, Vice Mayor and City Council. Uh, the, uh, farmers market, uh, when they wanted to reopen to a full market, uh, their proposals were, um, I don't have all of them in front of me, but they were going to spread out their vendors farther apart, so have fewer vendors. Uh, they were also going to have more hand washing stations throughout the, uh, the parking lot. And they would be encouraging, uh, social distancing and the wearing of masks, but not requiring that. Uh, so, uh, those are just a few of the measures they were taking. Um, yeah, so there, there you go.
Would they, thank you, were they limiting the number of people allowed in the market at a time?
Uh, no, they were not, mainly because, uh, it is not a fenced in area, so people can walk in from many, um, points, um, along the parking lot or sidewalks. Uh, so, uh, that has not been one of the recommendations. Uh, they would need to, uh, either put barricades or fences up to accomplish that.
Okay. Um, yeah, I was hoping that, you know, they were, were to going, they were going to be taking a little bit more of a serious approach to this and an approach that might have, you know, been one that I would advocate in support of. But given what we're hearing tonight, I definitely am not in favor of that at all. Um, I think masks definitely need to be required and I think that the number of participants definitely needs to be limited and extremely controlled. Um, I definitely think that it is way too soon to be allowing a Fourth of July Parade. I do appreciate the Chamber's efforts to conserve public safety in the, in their plans, but as was mentioned by my colleagues, it's just, there's just no way, there's no way that that's going to be a success story and not a, um, a, a major spreader of this virus for, if it knows how many more folks will be impacted and whatnot. Um, and then in, in regards to the large groups and the sponsored events by the city, I definitely think we do not need to be doing anything that encourages any kind of larger group, um, defined by, I mean, gosh, ten, twenty people, you know, and more, I think, is a larger group in my opinion. Um, Mayor, hopefully that's clear and I appreciate, appreciate it.
Yeah, that's very clear. Mr. Odegaard, followed by Ms. Solis.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, very much. Um, you know, um, we have CDC guidelines, you know, of concerning, you know, not to have large gatherings, uh, that's more than ten. Um, as we all know, um, the, the movie theater is still closed. Um, I saw a couple of weeks ago that the rodeo is not going to happen. That kind of broke my heart. No rodeo this year. I always enjoy the rodeo. Um, and there's no plans of hearing of anybody doing anything immediate future of allowing large gatherings of people. Um, I do like the policy that we, uh, do not issue any permits, um, at all, um, that, uh, creates a large gathering of people right now. Um, I know this is gonna make some people mad at me, but, you know, I have to weigh in the public safety, uh, component of a community. Um, we as a community and the nearby communities been hit very hard by COVID. And so that weighs heavily on my mind is considering the safety aspect of the community with large gatherings. Here at my own shop, um, we are trying our best of not allowing more than ten people to congregate. Uh, we are not having any classes. Um, we're going to start one class this Saturday, but again, we're limiting it to less than ten people. Um, and even the people are very, uh, not cooperating with our guidance from the CDC of not allowing large gatherings. It's just, it's just a little frustrating that people are not taking it to heart of following it, especially when we had such a, a large outbreak in our community and the nearby communities. Um, so, um, so that's my direction of continuing the policy of not issuing any permitting. And then as far as sponsorship, um, I'm a little concerned, um, attaching our name to something where it could be, um, some negative consequences of us attaching ourselves to it. So I, I'm not in favor of that either at this time. Um, hopefully with our bold steps of making tough decisions of the safety of our community, uh, this will all pass and looking towards events, um, in the near future. Um, you know, we just had Memorial Day weekend. Um, a lot of events, uh, were canceled, um, which was so unfortunate that we could not have a gathering of memorializing those that sacrificed for our country. And, but then on the other hand, we still had a pretty, uh, full community with our hotels. It seemed like most hotels that I drove by over the weekend were pretty full or near capacity. And so I don't think, um, we have to do a large gathering because of economics. That does not make any sense to me. And so, so that's my thoughts on this. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We have Ms. Solis, followed by Ms. Whelan.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, you know, a lot of things can happen in the next three weeks and I maintain my position in, in holding on any decision until, um, June fifteen or June sixteen, where, when we have a council session to, about, um, uh, issuing the Fourth of July Parade permit. Uh, I appreciate, uh, the, the Chamber's effort in, in, um, um, establishing, um, safety, uh, measures and social distancing, um, about organizing the parade and how it's going, how they, uh, plan to, um, mobilize the parade. And the parade these days are, are happening, like we have parade for, for birthdays and graduations. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful, you know, that, um, in three weeks, you know, things, things can change and, uh, we may be able to, um, safely and cautiously, um, conduct events. Thank you.
Can you weigh in on the second part of the question that has to do with city-sponsored events?
Uh, I mean, sponsorship, you know, sponsorship has, has been my, my line of four, four, for eight years and, um, and in all the sponsorship contracts I have, I have, I have, uh, I have administered, there was never an incident that the sponsor is liable to any, uh, to any risk, uh, happening at the event they, they sponsor. So I'm here to, to, to support events safely. Thank you.
So then we have Ms. Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this breaks my heart that we have to even have this discussion, but we do. And I appreciate all my colleagues. I appreciate the community weighing in. Um, I understand the, the deep sighs and the frustration, uh, of, of these decisions. It is clear to me, I'm reading the CDC as, as we all speak. I'm also remembering our discussion that what we wanted to see as a council was a fourteen day decline in numbers. And I do believe we need to be very specific as to what numbers that we're talking about. And I would love to see staff come up with that. Are we talking about cases positive in Coconino County? Are we talking about West Flag, East Flag? Are we taking the city and its regions in whole? Or are we going to drill down just to city, which I don't think is needed because we are a regional municipality and we have people coming in and coming out, uh, in masses, uh, at weekends and, and particularly weekends. So I, I do believe it needs to be a regional number. Our numbers are not going down. Um, our numbers are going up. And, um, I would like to see some better data to show that while, while we're just being, we spoke about this in our COVID discussion the other day, that the data we're not get, we're getting, uh, is, is just a daily look. And I believe that we need to look at the broader scope and at least show our community the broader scope. With that in mind, uh, I look at the larger venues and, and they're doing a pickup, uh, setup. And I agree with that. Uh, so my thought is pretty clear, safety first and that safety is of the people who we represent. And that would be that we maintain our, uh, decision on, um, permitting and that we also do not, uh, participate in sponsoring large events. Is that clear, Mayor?
It is so clear.
Thank you.
On, so I believe everybody in council has weighed in. I do want to also weigh in to make sure I'm on the record as well. Um, there's pretty clear consensus, um, that, um, we are not interested in issuing a permit for the Fourth of July, um, parade. Um, and that we're not interested in having the city sponsor events that bring, um, that bring together large gatherings of people. Um, I do want to put, uh, two things, I guess, two additional, uh, comments I have to the conversation. You know, I want to say first and foremost, um, the Fourth of July Parade is huge here in the city of Flagstaff. Um, it's one of our signature events. We are very lucky that we have a partner such as the Chamber of Commerce who spearheads that event. And it's definitely a partnership. Um, and so I do not wish that the Chamber thinks that the partnership is not valued. Um, I want to mention though, because it was mentioned by one of our council members, that we have, you know, uh, uh, birthday parades going on now. And then we have, for example, a, um, a graduation parade that's going to happen this week. I will tell you that I participated in the birthday parade. I think there was a total of maybe fifteen, twenty cars. None of us got out of our car. You know, on Facebook, we were told the address to drive by and we were told what time to drive by and we drove by, um, and we waved at the individual who was looking at us. That is completely different in my mind than the Fourth of July Parade. I'm not even sure how we can actually compare those two activities, um, especially when we know that the Fourth of July Parade brings about ten thousand people to it. You know, some of those people are from Flagstaff, a large amount of those people are not. We keep talking about the numbers and the fourteen day decline. And I do think it's really important that we as a community, um, understand what numbers we're using and whether or not we think that we should be using numbers that are just Flagstaff proper or should we consider the health of the Greater Flagstaff region, so meaning places like Doni Park, um, Mounds Park, Kachina Village. You know, it's interesting that we are having this conversation because, um, that, that's the Greater Flagstaff area. And when you look at the Greater Flagstaff area, definitely the numbers are not going down, um, at all, and they are increasing. Um, then you, um, add to those numbers, um, the fact that we have a major issue, um, happening on Navajo. Um, you have Hopi that's also in the middle of that, and you get a sense of the overall health of this region and the health of our community and the health of people that are in and out of our community. Um, I also think it's important to point out that in other areas, and I'm going to talk about Louisiana, for example, in the Amatigaw Parade that happened, um, in New Orleans. You know, be, before the Amatigaw Parade, it could be said that COVID might have been an issue there, but it wasn't something that was first and foremost in people's minds. They had a parade. They ended up on the front page of the newspapers for weeks afterwards because of the major issue and the spike in COVID and the people that were getting sick and dying. So I, I say to myself, even if in fifteen days, even if on the Fourth of July, maybe there would be little, if any, um, COVID here in our city. To bring together a group of ten thousand people and to think that there's not going to be a problem afterwards, especially when we've already seen examples nationally of what that looks like, I think that we need to be mindful of that. Now, I would like for us to get to August here in our city and for all the kiddos to go back to school, for everybody to not be wearing face masks and for us to be on the other side of this. And I think that that requires discipline on behalf of us as council members, on behalf of our organization, and on behalf of ourselves as individual residents, right? Um, I have been, well, I'm from Flagstaff. I remember when we used to have actual fireworks and everything. And things have changed over the years because conditions have changed. And so I really think that we as Americans, um, certainly we can find pride, um, on the Fourth of July as Americans and we can do that, um, being mindful of the fact that we might not be able to have everything we want that day. But with the fact that we're Americans, we're going to be proud anyway. And we're going to be able to show our pride in different ways. At least I would hope that we can do that. And so I am a no, along with, uh, I believe five other council members, as well as a, um, no that I don't think that we should be, um, putting public dollars toward events on private property that still draws additional people. So, Mr. Uh, City Manager, does that give you direction?
Oh, yes, Madam Mayor, we have clear directions. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move down to item number nine. This is a discussion, support letter for appropriating funds to repair and repave Snow Bowl Road.
Madam Mayor, Council, I'm glad to kick this conversation off as well. You, you have before you a request for a support letter. It's not a request for appropriations or any, anything of monetary value. It's a request for the city to participate with a support letter for the appropriation of funds to repair and repave Snow Bowl Road. The letter speaks for itself. This came to our attention last week. We did not have enough time to get it in front of council, so it's before you this evening.
Okay, Council, do you want to weigh in on direction for this letter of support? And Ms. Odegaard.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I personally do think we should weigh in in support of a letter of asking that the road be repaired or, I guess, repaved since the road was last repaved from the letter, 1990, I guess. So obviously, the life of the, of the road is at a point where it does need to be replaced. To me, it makes sense that the road needs to be fixed and that we should ask support of seeing it fixed. Even, you know, with all the other concerns concerning the snowball itself. Even if the snowball wasn't have what it has as far as permitting, the snowball would still be in operation. Looks like from the letter and from some of the history that is just as many forest users as well as ski users use that road or fairly close. So I think I would definitely be in support of asking so that road can be repaved so people can use that road to enjoy the mountain. So, thank you.
I'm going to go to Ms. Drum first because there's a public comment card. And then I will go back to the order that we have. We have Ms. Whelan followed by the Vice Mayor, followed by Ms. Solis, followed by Mr. Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item or the first comment on this item is, hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Joe Shannon, 30-year resident and living for the past 15 off of Fort Valley AZ- AZ-180. Thank you for the chance to comment during this time of COVID. Snow Bowl Road slash Forest Service 516 has been degrading ever since Arizona Snowball installed their reclaimed water pipeline. The uphill right-side shoulder is the primary location of the pipe, which has deteriorated to the point where many cyclists no longer feel safe pedaling there going up or down. Although I realize this is, this is a support letter of request from Arizona Snowball for federal funds to resurface the road. It is a shame that the U.S. Department of Agriculture slash Forest Service does not have the planning ability to foresee the year-round recreation to degrade the road. Given the massive building currently happening at Snow Bowl and more is planned, the next U.S. Department of Agriculture slash Forest Service planning process should include fees to pay for road maintenance since the majority of the road use is to Snow Bowl. This support letter request would have more, would have a more sympathetic ear if JR said that Arizona Snowball will at least match federal funds to resurface the road. The next comment on this item is, this email references Agenda Item Number Nine on today's city council meeting. Agenda Item Number Nine, requesting city support for effort to secure federal funding for repair and repaving Snow Bowl Road. A few bullet items from my point of view. This is a unique situation, private business seeking funding for a public road. However, after years of working the quote-unquote "system," we are no closer to success. The Coconino National Forest is aware of my efforts. They cannot advocate as an employee of the agency, and this project needed a champion for the greater community benefit. Snow Bowl Road is a U.S. Forest Service road, USFS Number 516. No economic or monetary outlay for city. Sustained economic impact for city, tourism, outdoor recreation, hiking, camping, tribal ceremonies, and plant gathering, et cetera. Road used by many, climb a mountain to conquer cancer, bicycle recreation, training and races, Olympic team training, forest restoration, et cetera. Seeking similar support from Coconino County and state. Road is in bad shape, will only get worse. USFS road funding falls short at the national level. Normal budget process does not appropriate enough funds for priority projects. Possibility of future COVID relief bills, including infrastructure. We desire to have this project identified and ready for funding. Arizona delegation is working on strategy to secure funds. Support letters will aid that effort. Snow Bowl Road is listed on the Coconino National Forest Priority List for quote-unquote shovel-ready projects submitted to the Regional Office in Albuquerque. Thank you for considering the request to submit a letter of support for funding for the, the Snow Bowl Road project. I'll be online watching the meeting. I'm not sure if technology exists for Q and A JR. And I have one more public comment on this item. Honorable Mayor and Council, I am writing to encourage Council to write a letter to specific members of the Arizona delegation in Washington, DC to help secure funding for repairs and replacement of the Snow Bowl Road. As you are aware, Snow Bowl Road provides access to the western side of the San Francisco Peaks northwest of Flagstaff and is used by thousands of hikers, bicyclists, campers, and tourists in addition to visitors to the Snow Bowl Ski Area. Snow Bowl Road, Snow Bowl Road, excuse me, has also been used over the years as the venue for climb to conquer cancer, Flagstaff Aminum by Grace, and the Snow Bowl Hill Climb, recreational events, all of which had a positive impact on Flagstaff as a community. Additionally, popular Forest Service hiking trails, including the Humphreys Peak Trail and Kachina Trail, originate from the ski area parking lots and Snow Bowl, Snow Bowl Road is the only access for, to the higher elevation recreational sites on the peaks, making the condition of the road critical for fire prevention and fuel reduction projects, fire suppression, evacuation route for forest users, tribal religious visits, and plant gathering, first responder, and overall travel safety. Thank you for your consideration in this request. Sincerely, Paul L. Brinkman. And that's the last public comment on this topic.
Okay, so we're going to go back. Thank you, Ms. Drum. We're going to go back to Ms. Whelan, followed by the Vice Mayor, Ms. Solis, and Mr. Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. My question was answered that it's a Forest Service road. And I, I would just like, I'm weary about setting precedent that we are now weighing in on Forest Service roads. You know, I have a road 244A that I would like to see fixed too. So I'm just wondering why, why we're being asked this. It's, it's outside of the city. I understand that that community uses it. I, I don't know. I just think that it's, it's opening a can of worms, quite frankly.
That's, that's all, Mayor. Okay. We have the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I too had similar sentiments and comments to Councilor Whelan about what this does in terms of setting a precedent, given that it's outside the state limits. And I was wondering if there was a record of other similar kinds of advocacy by the city in the past without going down a can of worm, worm, wormhole on this? And if other, like, I was wondering, you know, if other businesses have, have also asked for our support like this.
So I, I would ask city staff to weigh in on that. But I want to say that this council, I believe it was this council, voted for us to actually fund county activity when it came to Highway 180 as well as snow play. City staff, do you have any comments?
This is Jessica Drum, Mayor Evans. I believe, and I'd have to check to find the, the specific items that I believe we have in the past, advocated for items related to the Grand Canyon.
Yes, we have. And I think also yeah.
Okay, that, that's helpful. Okay, I think that's, that's all from me for now. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Solis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Snow Bowl Road, you know, is, is enjoyed by a huge size of our population, more than, more than snowboarders or skiers. And I remember taking my, my son who, who field trips in the area. And myself, when I have guests from town, I, I take them to hike in the area. In fact, one of my favorite hiking spots is, is, is just off Snow Bowl Road where there is a tank. So I'm here to, to support sending a letter of support to fund repairs and repayment of the Snow Bowl Road, which is the, a U.S. Forest Service maintained road. Thank you.
So we're going to go to Mr. Aslan.
Thank you. Are we providing direction tonight?
Yep, we're providing direction.
Clear to me from Councilmember Whelan or Vice Mayor Shimonie if they were
I'm going to go back to them.
Or thumbs down. Okay, but yeah, I, I mean, I just, I understand their concerns in terms of a can of worms and precedent being set. I, I don't know why it's really incumbent upon us to weigh in on one particular road. I, I will absolutely acknowledge and readily admit that, you know, Forest Service Road 516 is a very important road for Flagstaff. I use it all the time. You know, one thing that no one else has mentioned that runs through, the Arizona Trail runs through there. There's a really nice trail access right from Forest Service 516. It's a great hiking spot. And I know that that road has a lot of uses other than simply providing access to snowboarders and skiers. And that's, that's an important use of the road also. So, and road clearly needs to be repaired. So, you know, in, in essence, I'm very supportive of the idea of federal dollars coming in to, to do that infrastructure project that is definitely needed. And we, as a community, we wouldn't want to go without those repairs. But logistic, from a logistical standpoint, I, I do question the precedent that this sets. And so that's where I'm at also. And if you need to come back to me, you're welcome to.
I will, because we need to get clear direction. I'll come back to you. Ms. Odegaard.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We have weighed in on other things that are not directly tied with, in the city limits of Flagstaff. You know, the Grand Canyon, for example, that was mentioned. The mining happened near the Grand Canyon. We waved in on that. And so this is not really out of the normal at all, weighing in on something that we find important as a community. And I think this road is important as a community, as we've heard from people. All the recreation things that we as a community enjoy by using that road. And, you know, and also the, all the important things as far as giving back, like climb, climb the mountain for cancer. Important community event that draws a lot of people and a lot of the community. Instead, it only makes sense that we as a council body do weigh in in support of seeing that road repaved. And so, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question is about process. I don't think there's any doubt that the road needs to be repaired. But we have a process set up where if there, there's projects being considered, that we go to the FMPO, which is Metro Plan, of course, is what we call it now. And it may be that this is needed, but there may be other things that are actually more needed than this. So I'm a little hesitant to say, yeah, let's write a letter of support for this project without vetting all the other projects that this very considerable amount of money might be better spent on. Thank you.
I'm going back to the Vice Mayor.
That's so funny. I was just typing comments into our little chat bar. So, Councilmember McCarthy, I really appreciate bringing that up. And that kind of brings me back to something I keep bringing up week after week, and that is having a COVID guiding plan or guidance plan that helps us with these types of decisions. Because this is just the start of it, you know, whether it's requests for support with a letter or financial support or how to allocate funds that we do receive one of these days. I think it's important that we have a guiding document that helps us prioritize those who need it the most or the efforts that best, have the best impact on the public and our community at large. And list all votes, you know, and that doesn't just, you know, list certain votes. So yeah, I mean, I, I feel okay with us writing on, like, issuing this letter of support because it is timely and, and here we are today. But at the same time, I do think we need to, to be more prepared next time with a plan that helps us filter these types of decisions in a priority type of, with, with a lens of priority to those who best, who most need it. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to put you down as a yes. Is that correct? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I'm on the fence, but I, you know, I, I feel like I'm leaning more towards yes and no. But I'm definitely on the fence. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Whelan?
Yes, Mayor. Even more so today, I think it's, it's important that when we can, we help one another. And while I do have concerns about, is this really our place or whatever, it's something that, that we can do. We can provide support. We can help each other out, and this is an opportunity, so I say yes.
Mr. Aslan?
I just feel like Vice Mayor's comments really captured it for me. I'm on the fence on this. I, I think there is a question about process. But do I want to make this the, the line that I take a stand on? Not necessarily. I mean, I think those repairs are totally appropriate and needed. And so I'm, I'm not going to stand in the way in this in the name of, of larger process conversation that needs to happen. And so I'm a yes, but be that as it may, I really do think Mr. McCarthy's comment about the FMPO is, is really interesting. And I, I don't want to see another request like this come to us out of the blue before we have a way to just sort of look at how it's, how these types of projects are being prioritized through the region.
Okay, so then I want to weigh into the conversation as well. So I am a yes on sending the letter of support. I think that that when we have the opportunity that when we have the opportunity to assist, um then we need to do so. I think that part, I this is my personal opinion, I think that some of the hesitancy might um might be because um it's Snowball. And um we have had many conversations at the dais regarding Snowball and um another issue in our community. I think for me, what is important for us to understand is that this is Forest Service Road number um five sixteen. And that, for example, myself, I do not ski, I do not snowboard, but I know I've been up that road to go hiking. Um and we have a lot of people that go up that road to go hiking, to go up that road to go biking, to go up that road for other reasons that are not associated um with Snowball proper. Um and that that road needs to be maintained. I think that the Forest Service should be maintaining that road anyway. Um and I think it's sad that we are once again having to write letters pleading with um individuals to um, you know, maintain um their property, whether it be state lands, Forest Service lands, whatnot. Um and I also um would just uh remind council that council weighs in on a lot of different things that are within our jurisdiction and that some things that are not within our jurisdiction. I myself am the current Chair of the FMPO. I know that Mr. McCarthy is on the FMPO, Ms. Solis is an alternate. And um uh Mr. Odegaard, I believe, is the Vice Chair currently for the FMPO.
Without a doubt, I think using FMPO to vet that things and look at things are important. Uh but yeah, uh the FMPO is made up of four different organizations, five now. It might be that the FMPO looks at something that we send to it and says it's a number one priority. And it might be that it is actually a different level of priority when it comes to the um and so I just think that we need to be mindful of that. I also think we need to be mindful of the timeliness of some things. Certainly, we want to vet things with as many people as possible, but sometimes depending on the funding source, you don't necessarily have time to do that. So those are my comments on it. I'm gonna go back to Mr. Clifton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Madam Mayor, you were breaking up just a bit during that, but I think by and large, your comments were audible. I um you mentioned a couple of things that I was going to speak to, so thank you. I'll elaborate on one, and it's just for the benefit of of uh the entire council. I and and thank you for a very thoughtful discussion on this, uh like the other agenda items. These letters of support for grants or appropriations are not not at all uncommon. And we are, we have been the recipient of these letters as we have been the sender of these letters on numerous occasions. And I just want to remind council of that, that we frequently, as we're seeking grant dollars for our very important projects, will go out to other jurisdictions and ask them for for very similar letters. We had a slew of letters on the Fourth Street Bridge project as one recent example. So I just want council to be mindful that uh while this is being thrust upon you with little notice, that's exactly what happens frequently. Uh grants come with deadlines, application deadlines. And we frequently get requests like this kind of at the eleventh hour. And I think we have also asked of similar letters under the same circumstances. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, council.
I feel like you have direction on this item, so I'm gonna go ahead and move us on. We're gonna go down to item number ten, which is public participation. This would be our second call for public participation for items that are not currently on our agenda. Ms. Drum, do we have any um public participations for this item?
Yes, Mayor, we do. We have one item. I'm pulling it up right now. This item raises follows. Dear Mayor Evans and Councilmembers, our family have lived in Flagstaff for over thirty years. Through hard work and perseverance, we have built and established businesses in Flagstaff. Laundry, retail services, rental cars, car wash, gas stations, restaurants, and hotels. As our family enterprise struggled, evolved, and flourished through the years, we have raised our three well-rounded children, who all went to Flag High, CCC, and NAU. Currently, our son and daughter, who have their own young families, manage our businesses. Over the years, we have been supporting local nonprofits and donating to many community causes. We have kept Speedy Car Wash and Fuel open through COVID nineteen pandemic, implementing CDC guidelines for safety and social distancing. As Flagstaff's first and only local family-owned and independently operated one-stop shop for gas, car wash, and convenience store with a beer cave, we continue to invest in our local economy by recently upgrading our fuel pumps and renovating our property. We opened our motel in partnership with Flagstaff Shelter Services to provide safe temporary shelter to those who are in dire need of a roof over their heads while the entire co- um country was ordered to stay home. Through this pandemic, we have sustained our employees, whom we consider our extended family. Our family enterprise is only one of many local small businesses determined to stay open for business in Flagstaff while faced with difficulties and uncertainties along with dwindling revenues. As we navigate through the quote-unquote new normal with CDC guidelines in place and striving to keep our business open, we urge you, Mayor and Council, to support House Bill twenty-nine twelve titled "An Act Limiting Enforcement Actions and Civil Liability During a Public Health Emergency." It provides liability protections for entities operating during this pandemic and lessen penalties for entities that violate executive orders related to COVID nineteen. It waives civil liabilities for schools, churches, and religious institutions, nonprofit organizations, and businesses in Arizona during a state of emergency order related to COVID nineteen outbreak. Liability is not waived if the entity acted with gross negligence. Please support HB twenty-nine twelve to alleviate the challenges of business It will allow small business like ours to stay focused on recovering from the pandemic and rebuild our local economy. Respectfully, Robin and Pragna Prima, owners of Prima Group of Companies. And that is the last public um comment for this, for open public comment.
Okay, thank you. So what we're gonna do is we're going to adjourn this meeting, and we're going to then call to order a special meeting of the Flagstaff City Council. I do not see that we have to take roll call. I just want to make sure that that's correct with um the city clerk. Okay, so I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. I am then going to call to order a special meeting of the Flagstaff City Council. I will provide notice that the Flagstaff City Council has the ability to recess into executive session for legal advice should we so choose to do so. We are now down to item number two of our special meeting agenda. This is a review of the City of Flagstaff revenue estimates for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Rick Tatter, Management Services Director. We'd like to take this opportunity to give you an update on what our revenue projections are looking for forward to the end of the year and uh potential estimates for the upcoming year. If we go to the next slide. Our agenda is gonna discuss our economic recession plan, provide some revenue updates, talk about what we're doing as far as local recovery efforts. Our path forward as an organization moving into a significant stage and the potential measures uh that we'll be looking at under the significant stage should you uh move forward with that resolution uh after this presentation. And for the first uh section, I would invite City Manager Clifton to present on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Tatter, uh and thanks to your team. And if I may inconvenience you, I have a few comments. But in the course of my comments, I would also like to uh share my screen and put up one quick projection, and and then I will relinquish that back to you and your PowerPoint if that works for you, Rick.
Yeah, Shannon has the control of PowerPoint, and it looks like she's gonna unshare it.
Very good. Shannon always has control. Um, Madam Mayor, Council, uh Rick Tatter and his team will provide much of this discussion, but I would like to kick it off with a couple of comments about the recession plan. And uh I'll start by reminding you that the recession plan was formally adopted by the council in April of this year. Uh the plan is intended to provide an adaptable series of measures that are implemented to offset declining revenues. Basically, the plan consists of five stages, each representing an incremental action, a series of incremental action items that correlate with decreasing city revenues as measured by various indicators. Rick and his team will talk more about that a little bit later. These indicators look across the spectrum of all revenues. They are not limited to one source or one fund. And with each increment of decline, there are identified action measures to lessen expenditures that will serve to offset the declining revenues. So as the revenues drop, expenditures are are cut back, and that is what the recession plan puts into play. In April, we, at the staff level, administratively entered into the second stage of the recession plan, which corresponds with indicators of a two to five percent decrease in revenues. That's a year-to-date revenue uh decrease. This is the moderate stage or the second stage, and it includes action items such as a recruitment freeze, a deferment of some large projects, the suspension of unnecessary training and travel, and other related strategies. I want to point out that from the numbers we are beginning to see in terms of declining revenues right now, and and I'm speaking of the the current time, not the next fiscal year, we are on the mark in terms of being two to five percent down year-to-date, and uh Rick may want to elaborate upon that a little bit later. But I mention it because it's an important side note that so far, so far in this, as as we're talking about the current fiscal year, our projection for decrease uh has been uh pretty accurate. Advancement into further stages of the recession plan will now require council action, and that is the reason we're having this as both a discussion item and an action item before you. Thank you for granting us a special meeting to accommodate this. The third stage of the recession plan is labeled as significant. This presupposes a decline in revenues between five and ten percent year-to-date. We are looking ahead at the next fiscal year, and that is where this this projection lies, as we enter into the next fiscal year, which starts on July first. We are fairly confident that we will be entering into this phase, the the uh significant phase with the five to ten percent declining revenues. Rick Tatter, Brandy Suda, and the rest of the team will be speaking as to the methodology and assumptions underlying this progression. But I want to impress upon council that the topic has been covered at length by the budget team over the past two months. We are talking about these numbers on a regular basis. I would like to comment or emphasize two key points. The first is that the process needs to be adaptive and easy to implement. We do not know what lies ahead, but as time marches on, we will have the benefit of having numbers and some hindsight to guide us. We certainly don't have that now, uh but we do have some information to base our decisions upon. I do want to mention that some of the data that I was referencing uh includes a survey being conducted by Northern Arizona University, the Alliance Bank Economic Policy Institute. The survey has been actively pursued over the past month and will continue into the near future, so it's a work in progress. This is where I'd like to share the screen with you. If you'll indulge me for just one minute, please. Council, hopefully you have in front of you an image from the Coconino County and Sedona uh survey. This survey was regional in nature, and this is the survey coming from the Alliance Bank Economic Policy Institute. And again, it's a work in progress. There are four uh, at least four points where the survey information is being compiled and data is being produced. So it's an ongoing uh survey as it should be, considering the rapidly changing economic environment that we're now in. First survey results came in April twenty-ninth. And before I proceed, I just want to check in and make sure this is visible to everybody.
I believe it is.
Thank you, Mayor. When we we go to the April twenty-ninth meeting, and you'll see some of the surrounding communities, of course, we're just gonna talk about Flagstaff. And please, I'm not going to get deep into any numbers here. I just want to highlight a few key points. Without getting uh immersed in the graph in front of you, what takeaways occur in Flagstaff as of April twenty-ninth are depicted in the uh the the bubble uh information on the right. Sixty-eight percent of businesses were open at that time. Open businesses were operating on the average of about fifty percent capacity. Open businesses had seen an average of about forty-one percent decrease in revenues. This again is on April twenty-ninth. And there were about forty-four percent reporting layoffs and furloughs. As we back out of that information and go forward to May twentieth, which is the more recent information, and I'm gonna go to the exact same parameters. And all this is just illustrating one point that I'll get to. These are not important numbers to try to memorize. The same bubbled bullet points, whereas sixty-eight percent of the businesses were open uh in April twenty-ninth, seventy-one percent were open as of the more recent survey uh on May twentieth. Businesses jumped from a fifty percent capacity to a fifty-six percent capacity, and a decline in revenues went from forty-one percent on April twenty-ninth to thirty-seven percent on May twentieth. Those reporting furloughs or layoffs decreased from forty-four percent to thirty-six percent. What is the relevance of this? Well, first, I think it's an excellent survey, and and I give uh some very well-deserved accolades to the the team of people who are behind this with NAU Alliance Bank Economic Policy Institute. The takeaway in my uh, the the reason I'm uh talking about this right now is simply to illustrate that things are changing rapidly. And in some of what I just talked about, there has actually been an uptick in some of the economic parameters, even though I don't, I can't quantify it any more than I have. Uh but the the again, the takeaway is, on a week-by-week basis, we're seeing a rapidly changing economy.
Can we fix um?
I'm about to exit out of this, and I'm gonna let Rick take over on the scenes, the screen sharing. I am done presenting what I wanted to out of these uh survey results, if that's okay, Madam Mayor.
Before you go out of there, can you please put up your first slide?
On April twenty-ninth?
Ms. Whelan, is that the slide you need to see?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager.
I would also ask City Manager, is this available on our website in the COVID nineteen um section?
No, Madam Mayor, this is a work in progress. It is available on the website for for NAU, that the Policy Institute. We're reluctant, it's it's in just illustrative of the fact that I was trying to raise, which is that things are changing. But beyond that, these numbers are gonna continue to change, so it's not out there for broad dissemination at this point, but it is on their website.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Is council okay if I exit out of this at this time?
Yes.
Thank you, and I will relinquish my screen uh back to Rick Tatter, and I will finish up with my comments, and we can get on with the business here. Uh. I made the first point, I I think, at a risk of overstating it, that that things are changing, and we've actually seen a slight uptick in in some parameters. But again, a word of caution, the survey is ongoing, and we don't want to read too much into this. It just highlights the central premise that we cannot project ahead what what's facing us, as there is already some change that we were not uh exactly expecting. Stated differently, we we need to be nimble, and we need to be prepared to address a rapidly changing economic landscape. The second point I would like to make, and I'll end on this, is that the recession plan stands independent of the budget. We very deliberately set it up this way, as the budget is an annual document, and the expenditures as listed in it represent a maximum that could be expended for that entire fiscal year. If we were to endeavor to tailor the budget to an anticipated downturn, we would have to make many assumptions on the front end, and there are simply a lot of unknowns here. Implementing the recession plan as a tool enables us to scale back on the expenditures without having to amend the budget, which is a very lengthy process, and we can therefore make, take remedial actions in quick succession. More significantly, it enables us to avoid the implementation of rather draconian measures on the front end, such as layoffs, work reduction, and the like. We may have to address those over time, but we'll know when we do, because we'll be operating under the recession plan. At this time, I would like to invite Rick Tatter and his team to walk you through the revenue projections and the methodologies that went behind those projections. I think I might have some additional comments a little bit later regarding possible action items to be taken at this time, specific to compensation, but I'll wait till later if that's okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Council. Do you have anything for the City Manager before we move on? Thank you, Mr. Tatter.
All right, as City Manager Clifton has mentioned, the budget team is focused on our revenue projections. We are meeting multiple times and having the discussions we need. Keep an eye on the ball. The review of revenue projections is a voice of many perspectives. You know, as mentioned, there's a variety of people on the budget team. We reached out to CVB to talk about what they see in their industry for hotels and restaurants, as well as the surveys, as mentioned, taking those into effect and seeing how those pan out, and many other economic webinars have been available over the last couple of months. So just quickly to update you with the fiscal year 2019, 20-year-end estimates, we are estimating the revenues to be about 1.3 million below, maybe a little bit higher as we get through this month and understand some of our other revenues, but I think we made a good approach on April 13th to start the moderate stage, so that we can assure that the revenue, the expenditures we're making tie to those reductions of revenues that we may have seen. Within our projections, we've seen about, and we're projecting about a 32% decline in our sales tax revenues in the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. And, you know, we looked at what other areas had for theirs, and we've seen similar, even the county had, I think theirs was about 38% decline in this quarter. So we're feeling pretty comfortable with these numbers. We'll have May's numbers available next week, and so we'll be able to get a little more there. But you can see with the projected shortfall, 1.3 million, the actions that we administratively taken to address those, we feel we're going to match those revenues through reductions in expenditures, through position freezes, the non-essential, non-public safety ones. Travel and training has been frozen for the organization due to the current pandemic, and other operational savings, asking sections to withhold spending money where possible. We see we can recover that $1.3 million. Also, you know, we are aware of many grants that are coming in. We have a team that is working hard to watch what resources may be out there on a federal level and state level. And so we have future resources can also help us with this year-end projections, such as the Airport CARES grant, and how those will reduce the dependency on our general fund and our transfers into that enterprise fund. But with caution, you know, I wouldn't necessarily say those are monies available to spend, because we have to further address the upcoming fiscal year and make sure that's sound before looking at adding other programs or other funding expenditures going forward. We can go to the next slide. So the revenue projections for next fiscal year, 2020-21, we've developed a multi-scenario approach to providing these estimates. You can't really look at an estimate in a silo and say, well, this is really the only projection scenario I have. But there's many things that can happen over the next fiscal year, so we gave some thought to different approaches and different thoughts of what could occur with our revenues for next fiscal year. Further, we built our spreadsheets to provide our estimates on a month-over-month projection and not just annual projections. So where we can look at, okay, the months of July through August, we want to put at a certain percentage, and then so on, September and so forth, have a different percentage and do those types of revenue projections. So we made it a little more adaptable to what we can see possibly happen in our economy over the next 12 months on a month-by-month basis. Of course, just to note, no scenario is right. Estimates are generally wrong, but we try our best to understand where they'll be into our best and estimate it to get close. Next slide. So I wanted to just discuss and outline kind of the four scenario projection process that the budget team went through in developing where we're at today in our recommendation. Scenario one is where our current economy returns, but then we have another COVID-19 impact, possibly something next spring again, just for an example. So looking at revenues, you know, starting now a little bit slower in the 70% range, and then starting to increase to possibly 100% and recovering for several months before possible reductions for another three months, similar that we saw this year. So that's kind of our first scenario. The second scenario is a weak economy early on, but then recover stronger. So again, this is where revenues are going to be kind of weak for the first months through September or so. And then after that, recovering possibly to 100%, not all of them go to 100%, honestly, but some of them do, some maybe get to the 90% or so forth, but that's a general perspective of what a weak economy early and a stronger recovery would mean. The third scenario is a weak economy longer and a slower recovery. And so this one, we look at our month-over-month tourism-related revenue, starting at, you know, something around 50% lower than the prior year, month-over-month, and slowly recovering until the second half of the year, where we may get to the 70 or 80% and possibly up to 90 by year-end in a month-over-month scenario. Retail estimates for the year, 5% down for the full year, every month going forward. And so that's just something where we don't see the revenues coming back as quickly in this scenario number three. Scenario four is simply averaging out these types of scenarios presented above. So just taking those numbers that are built and providing an average for the scenario. And that's the scenario the budget team is focusing on at this point, but we do have our eye on those other scenarios as we move forward also. We can go to the next slide. So here you have our table of revenue estimates for the coming fiscal year, an update of what we see could potentially be happening in our organization. Just as an outline, the categories on the left-hand side is all the general fund categories, sales tax, our state shared revenues, a couple of specific ones, franchise, building permits and property tax, and then our other category of revenues. That's a combination of many categories, such as, you know, charges for services, recreation fees, fines and forfeitures, interest revenues, and those types of revenues in our general fund. So that's all the categories, and then what we are looking for budget adoption next month through the council, when we had a budget that was balanced to present, we demonstrate the revenues that we are projecting in each one of those categories. So about 65.3 million was expected in the general fund next fiscal year. The middle box with the yellow highlights, scenario one, two, and three, are those that I discussed on the previous slide. And then how do those numbers pan out for each one of those scenarios? So looking at the economy returns, but then another event, we see that revenue projections overall could be around the $3.4 million short in the 5% range, which is in that significant level of the economic recession plan. The middle one is that weak economy, but a stronger recovery. We see that those could be revenue reductions of possibly 2.8 million in revenues, and about a 4.2% decline. That falls just under the significant level, but it's very close to that same level that we're seeking approval tonight. The third one is that weak economy with a slow recovery, and this is the one where we see the largest impact of the general fund for the city of Flagstaff. And here you can see approximately $6.4 million in revenue decline versus what we adopted in the budget in June. This one hits to the 10, close to the 10% level, which is the high end of the significant economic recession plan stage. So when you look at those on an average, that's the next column for scenario four that's blocked out. And here you can see, looking through the numbers, averaging out, we're looking at about 4.2 million decline in revenues for the upcoming fiscal years potentially, and that's about a 6.4% decline over what the city has budgeted in FY 2021. So that falls clearly in the center, a little on the higher end of the significant stage of our recession plan. Just as a note, when we look at what revenues were impacted during the Great Recession several years back, in that, those scenarios, we saw about a 13% decline in our major revenues for the city of Flagstaff. We're not ready to project anything like that, but we are aware of what a 13% decline would put us through the economic recession plan, but for now, we're comfortable with the 6.4% decline. The last column or columns gives you the comparison of where the revenues are impacted most. You'll see that the sales tax revenues are looking at an 8% decline in our averaged of the three scenarios. Going down, state shared sales tax, we also see that those would have a fair impact in those areas. About 400,000 or 5.6% decline. Auto-lu, which is our vehicle registration, will see some decline, possibly a 7% decline, as people may not be buying those high-ticket vehicles or so forth and registering those. I skipped state shared urban revenue. Those are pretty solid, because those are based on prior year collections, so you won't see those numbers reflected in much change for this year, but we're watching those for the following fiscal year, and they'll have impacts at that point. And just to quickly summarize, other building permits is one that we can see impacted heavily, although we are seeing construction is still moving forward. We got a lot of projects out there, and maybe we're underestimating in that category, but we'll see as we get more data. And the general fund, other revenues, we see large impacts in our investment incomes, as well as our charges for service, such as recreation fees, as we keep our facilities closed a little bit longer, we'll see those declines and fines and forfeitures as people have the ability to pay their fines and forfeitures. So that's a summary of the general fund projections and scenarios that the budget team has developed together and are looking for consideration in moving to the significant stage of the recession plan. And then the next slide. And this is, you know, this is not all just about the general fund. This is about our organization. We do understand that other funds are going to be impacted, and we are still working hard to see how those revenues may be coming in. The BBB funds, you know, since we see that our hotel and restaurant industry is going to be one of our hardest-hit industries, and the revenues that they bring in come into our BBB funds through a 2% tax on those services, we see a rather large decline, a 17% possible decline on that average scenario, scenario four. That's about 1.6 million to those funds. And just as, excuse me a second here. You know, the hardest hits in the BBB funds will be the tourism and recreation funds to the tune of about a half a million each. Then we'll also see our beautification funds hit maybe about $320,000, and then our BBB and economic development funds by 150,000 or so in each of those funds. So we'll have to work with those funds and owners of those funds to assure that we make the appropriate adjustments based on our economic recovery, economic recession plan. Transportation funds basically funded through sales tax, about a 7.6% decline. And that's for our four transportation tax initiatives, which is the road repair, street safety, the transportation tax that was renewed, and for the Butler Route 66 Bridge construction. So we'll be looking at those. The main impact will probably be timing of projects within that area, but we'll be putting some work out there with the capital improvements team to assure we stay balanced within that fund. Highway user revenue tax fund, we've seen revenues decline there. People were not driving as much coming into our community. Streets were not much traffic going on. So we definitely see an impact to our HER fund going forward. We have heard from Arizona Department of Revenue how that affected their projects. In fact, them delaying our bridge replacement outside City Hall is one of the factors of this pandemic. So we'll be watching those revenues and rebalance appropriately through the recession planning. Park Flag is seeing annual or monthly revenue losses of about 105 by eliminating parking downtown, which is definitely needed at this time to free up the parking. And then other funds, we're going to continue to review those, such as the water, wastewater, reclaimed funds, stormwater, as those would see some impact, as we saw a large part of our community in the college group possibly have left town, so we didn't see the consumption numbers we saw. But over time, we're going to keep an eye on those and have those conversations to make the appropriate adjustments. And that's all I had for the revenue update numbers. I don't know, City Manager Clifton, if you have any comments here before we go into local recovery efforts?
No, but thank you.
Council, do we have any questions? I see one, Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Rick. Thank you and your team for all of these considerations. My question is that My question is that it seems as though that these numbers, while I repeatedly hear City Manager and you say that we don't really know the numbers, which kind of frightens me a little bit in that we want to focus in on several months at a time. But what happens, and there's a good chance that we have these numbers, and then next year we have the same numbers on top of these numbers. And then the next year we start perhaps pulling out, but we don't. So I'm asking about a long term. Already, we know, we just got the email, ADOT is, will be losing seven hundred and eleven million dollars. So, you know, the downplay in the HER funds, I just think cumulatively, it's going to be much more. And I know we're focused on almost a short term, but can you help me understand that?
Absolutely. A great question. And yeah, from, from these projections, these build into the out years of our five and 10-year plans that we have throughout the organization. So not only when we start talking about the strategies under the significant stage, we got to look at the long-term reductions of costs, not just a one-time, let's cut this expense this year and we'll put it back next year. So those conversations are definitely going to be part of what leadership's going to have to work with budget team, EAC, and the organization to look at balancing it long-term. We'll work with our finance department to update our five-year plans accordingly with the updated projections. But you're correct, some ongoing reductions need to be considered as well as potential one-times in this nature.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, Mr. Clifton. Mr. Clifton?
They like to mute me on this end, Mayor. I'm sorry. It happens a lot. I would like to add on to Rick's comments, and thank you, Councilmember Whelan, for a very excellent question. I'm going to go back to the Great Recession as an example because I think it really illustrates the point to be made. We were in a decline for at least five quarters when that recession hit, and I'm speaking in the true definition of recession. And that included the entirety of the two thousand and nine fiscal year that Rick made reference to when he said we were in excess of a thirteen percent decline. That was for an entire fiscal year. As we all know and recall, the economies did not return from the Great Recession for some time after that. Even when we started to see an emergence, it was slow and very protracted. So to be direct to Ms. Whelan's comment or question, we implemented a very similar recession plan back in two thousand and nine in a jurisdiction in Colorado where I work. And that recession plan stayed in effect for probably four or five years. And even then, the council at that time was reluctant to see us come out of it entirely. So even though the indicator showed something quite positive, there was a desire to stay conservative. So I just wanted to answer Councilmember Whelan's question by saying that the recession plan, again, it's adaptable to changing circumstances. But if we were to see a scenario, as Rick Tatter pointed out, that involved a very long recovery period, that's just another way of saying we will be in this recession plan for some time. And of course, the budgets, future budgets would be reflective of that as well. So it's quite possible, to Councilmember Whelan's question, that this could linger beyond the next fiscal year, but we're prepared for that.
Okay, I see that Mr. McCarthy has a question, comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I realize that predicting the future is an almost impossible task. But I'm more pessimistic than what we just heard from Mr. Tatter. We just mentioned that the two thousand and eight recession, we had like a thirteen percent cutback in income. And, you know, we're, the worst case scenario presented here was like 10% approximately. So my guess is things are going to be worse than what has been predicted by staff. Now, does that mean I'm right? No. Does that mean right, the staff is right or wrong? There's no way to tell, except wait and see. But I guess my bottom line is I'm a little more pessimistic than Mr. Tatter and his staff are, which means I think we need to be even more conservative in being careful with our money. So that's my comment.
I think that's all we have. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, Shannon Anderson, Deputy City Manager. I have the pleasure of, excuse me, introducing the next set of slides, the local recovery efforts. First, you'll hear about government relief, which is going to be led by Jack Fitchett, Sarah Langley, and Stacy Breckler-Nags. And then we'll have four divisions that will provide you an update, community development, economic vitality, the police department, and sustainability. I will turn it over to Jack Fitchett.
Thank you, Shannon, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Jack Fitchett, Management Analyst for the City Manager's Office. Going to quickly go over some of the government relief that we've been working on and provide a brief update on the state legislation. As many of you may have saw earlier this afternoon, our state lobbyist, Mr. Medeska, sent an update saying that the Senate adjourned signed eye. Earlier this afternoon, it was a close vote sixteen to fourteen, which essentially brings to the end this legislative session. It was about a three-week process and a fairly interesting one of that, you know, having the two, the two chambers adjourn at different times and come back at different times. But from his update this afternoon, they are done. However, you can expect to see a special session called sometime in the midsummer months, but that will ultimately be at the discretion of the governor. So we'll wait and see, and wait and see when that occurs. Also, last week, Governor Ducey gave a press conference, and he addressed the State and Local Stabilization Fund, Funds Moneys, which is funds that was allocated through the CARES Act to assist states, counties, and municipalities. Arizona is currently sitting on one point nine billion dollars that still needs to be distributed to municipalities and counties that had a population of less than five hundred thousand, which is most of our counties and municipalities. However, it was positive news that the governor did address the SLSF funds, as this was the first time he had done so publicly, and he noted that his office is working to efficiently and effectively distribute these funds to help assist pay for COVID-19-related expenses. So again, Mr. Medeska and I and our city team will be watching that closely to answer some very serious pending questions of how much the city can expect to receive from those funds and when they can expect to see them. So we'll be keeping a close eye on that. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Sarah Langley, who will give you a brief update on the federal legislation. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Mayor and Council, this is Sarah Langley, Management Analyst. As you know, the federal government has previously passed the FFCRA and the CARES Act, which we've previously talked about at the last budget retreat. After passing the CARES Act, Congress passed a further four hundred eighty-three billion dollars for COVID-19 response at the end of April. And this was allocated for the Paycheck Protection Program, Economic Injury Disaster Loans, hospitals, testing, and other federal legislative priorities. In May, we've seen some new bills come out of the House and Senate, such as the HEROES Bill, created by House Democrats, and the SMART Bill, which was co-sponsored by Senator Sinema. These bills will not pass, but they do serve as messaging bills or as placeholders. So although things are moving slowly right now, there is definitely growing bipartisan consensus for additional state and local funding in the next round of COVID legislation. And we remain confident that a stimulus bill will be passed at some point this summer.
Miss Sarah, I see that Mr. Azlan has a question.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I was happy to wait till the end of Sarah's comments, but I'll just go ahead and ask my question. This is both for her and Jack. I just kind of wanted to pause for a second and focus the light on the plight of the university systems here in the state. NEU's having trouble. The other major universities throughout the state are also having trouble and are going to have more trouble. We don't really have to talk too much about how elemental NEU's success is to the health and safety of Flagstaff. And they're going to need significant federal funds. And I'm just wondering if that's part of our legislative agenda to lobby on their behalf for those funds, what the conversation is when it comes to federal dollars and the university system, and if we're working with NEU to secure some of those monies.
Councilmember Azlan, Madam Mayor, this is Jack Fitchett. Thank you for the question. Last week, we had the Alliance Meeting, which NEU attended. It was a good meeting, and they had noted that they had received a little less than twelve million dollars so far from CARES Act funding, and were expected to receive another eleven million dollars from additional funding. They're still waiting on that second portion, but they, you know, they're active in pursuing their own legislative goals. But if there's opportunity for collaboration, we can certainly look into that.
Thanks, Jack. And just to follow up, that, of course, any, any funding opportunities that we see come through the city, we're sure to share with our partners and fellow community stakeholders to make sure we're all getting the resources that are allocated to us.
I just think, I would like to, I don't know if this needs to come as a fairytale request or what, but in terms of lobbying Sinema and McSally on federal relief for state and local governments and public universities included in this next round of COVID relief, you know, it's, from what I'm hearing, NEU is going to be absolutely decimated without further help and assistance. So I just think we need to keep them in mind and at the forefront of our minds.
Thank you, Councilmember. We'll definitely do that. I will touch base with Bob Holmes after this, this meeting and see if there's, there's any additional efforts we can take on that front.
All right. We'll continue on. This is Stacy Breckler-Nags. Thanks, Jack and Sarah, for your work. We continue to attend White House COVID briefing calls and many webinars. The city, as you know, is constantly seeking grant funding to support our essential services. The, so far, we have received eighteen million from the airport grant, which you're familiar with, for operating expenses. We've received housing and urban development, community development block grant funds, which will be talked about later in this presentation. And then, of course, we've received just recently the Department of Justice Police Grant for personal protective equipment. And we also have our Federal Emergency Management Administration through the state money for emergency protective measures that is through the Stafford Act with the, becomes part of that with the declaration. And then we recently applied for two new grants, Arizona Criminal Justice Commission. They received money from Department of Justice to the state, and they opened up this grant cycle for prosecution courts and our police and fire. And so we were able to submit some funding for prosecution of courts in this recent grant. And then Assistance to Firefighters, they opened up a grant that Jerry Bills and our team worked together to submit a grant for personal protective equipment. And as you know, the city is working hard every day to let our federal representatives know about the problems that are faced by Flagstaff residents and secure grant funding for our city to improve our quality of life and residence. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to, I think, Dan Folt and Sarah and the Community Development Team. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is Dan Folt, Community Development Director. I'm pleased to have the opportunity tonight to talk about some of the things we've been able to continue to provide to the community. So I'm going to touch on all three sections within community development. Much of what we do in community development was identified as essential services very early on by the state of Arizona. And so I think our team was able to respond quickly. So I'm happy to share this with you tonight. Let's start with housing. The first bullet is about the CDBG funds. This really is a reflection of the action you took last week. It was not only the adoption of our annual CDBG program, but some additional money that was provided for COVID relief. You reprogrammed some dollars for COVID efforts. And then, of course, we took some general fund money and contributed to the county for the eviction prevention program. So again, very pleased to be able to support the local Flagstaff Shelter Services and Catholic Charities with some of this COVID money. The second bullet is really about our housing manager, I'm sorry, our housing director, Sarah Dar. She's a member of the local Social Services Safety Net Coalition. They meet regularly, and so she's able to be our voice in making sure we're coordinating services with all the providers throughout the region. And then finally, there's some additional CARES Act funding that's been provided to our housing authority for public housing, the properties we operate, as well as the Section Eight voucher program. And so we've got some opportunity there to address the need. Next slide. I just tried to advance the slide and realized it wasn't going anywhere. All right, the next section is our Planning and Development Services section. We provide a lot of different services with this program, with this section. Again, I would say a week after City Hall was closed, we were able to start taking applications again for building permits and site plans and lots of other things that we review and issue permits on. Again, the team responded very quickly. I'd like to thank Becky Cardiff, our Development Services Manager, and Amy Palmer, our Building Official, again, for getting this up to speed. We've really been doing full services for over two months now remotely. The first link I've provided provides information on the various different permits we offer and how you go about applying for those permits in our new remote situation. We've continued with building inspections. Obviously, they wear all of the required PPE, masks and gloves. We ask contractors to leave the area, respect social distancing. We have done some virtual inspections for small things, having folks use their phone and do like a video inspection. I will tell you that overall, our program is tracking very close to a year ago in terms of the volume of permits. The valuation currently year-to-date is way up, but we'll probably see that even out as the calendar year continues. So right now, we're tracking, again, very consistent with last year's building activity. We really have not seen a slowdown. Then I provided a link. That second link gives you information on of our building information. Doesn't have, it doesn't have the revenues that Rick Tatter was talking about, but it does have permit numbers and the valuation of the project, which are two good indicators for that activity. Thanks, Shannon. You can go to the next one now. We wanted to mention the United States Census. This is kind of really critical to our long-term recovery. Sarah Decter, our Conference Planning Manager, is our Census Coordinator. They have restarted. They have restarted activity. I think you're getting regular updates from the manager and from Sarah on that. I believe there has been a request because they're going to keep the census ongoing into October of 2020. So I believe there's been a request for some additional funding to promote the activities of our Census Team. And so certainly, if you have any questions on what's happening with the Census, you can contact Sarah Decter directly. Next slide. In our engineering section, we wanted to talk about the capital program. They obviously support our Development Review Program as well, Gary Miller and his team. Really, the entire Development Review process is an interdivisional process, so pretty much every division in the organization is responsible for all the development review and permit activities that's going on. It's not just community development. So a big thank you to all of our internal partners. But within engineering, we're going to focus on capital tonight, again, identified by the state as essential services. We've grouped these projects into three categories. As you know, as you went over the five-year plan a few weeks ago, we do planning work, we do design work, and then we do construction. So as you can see, we have a full slate of projects that are happening this calendar year going into next fiscal year. So I think that's all we have for you tonight on community development. Be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Council? Okay, I did not, I did not see anything. I did have a question for Sarah and Jack. So my question for Sarah and Jack had to do with the 9.1 billion. I just want to make sure that I understand something. So the state was given, or the governor was given $2.8 billion to disperse the COVID-19 relief. So far, we have, he has $1.9 billion remaining. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, this is Jack Fitchett. Yes, you are correct.
Do we know what the other monies were spent on?
Yes, Mayor, the other portion of the allocated monies went directly to those cities and counties that had a population above 500,000. So, for example, Maricopa County, yeah.
Okay, so that's the money that's in question.
Correct. So, yeah, it's already been allocated to those municipalities and counties.
Okay. And so then I guess my follow-up question to that. So we are, we have been lobbying both senators, saying that cities and towns that are under 500,000 need a direct allocation. So we're not asking for additional monies, we're asking for them to pressure the governor to release the monies that he currently has.
Mayor, this is Sarah. We're asking for both. Jack has been, together with Todd, asking the governor for direction. And then from the federal front, we're also lobbying for additional funding in anticipation of the 2.8 billion being insufficient to cover revenue losses and additional expenses.
Okay, so just to make sure that I'm clear. What we are is we are asking the governor to release the rest of the money that he has to allocate that to cities and towns. That would be the $1.9 billion that he's currently sitting on. And then we're also asking our senators to, one, allocate additional monies, and, two, when those monies are allocated, to allocate them directly to the cities and towns so we don't have to wait for the governor to disperse them. Is that correct?
That's correct. And then an additional ask would be for increased flexibilities of existing and our already allocated funds to be used for COVID-related expenses in addition to lost revenues.
Okay, so then I have another follow-up question. What happened to the $100 million that was allocated by the legislator? Do we know what happened with that?
By the state legislature, Mayor?
Yeah.
I'll let Jack go ahead and answer that one.
Hi, Mayor, it's Jack again. So the, referring to the 55 million that was allocated to the Department of Health Services and the other 50 million that was allocated to the governor as a, it was titled almost as a Governor's Initiatives Fund, essentially is what's being referred to. And those monies have been used for a variety of things. The 55 million that was related to DHS has mainly been for COVID-related expenses again, so like lab equipment, testing gear, ventilators, that sort of thing. And then for the Governor's Initiative Funds, those were focused more on food bank assistance, homeless, homeless shelter assistance. And I can provide Council a more complete, I guess, allocations of where those monies have gone. The JLB C provides biweekly updates on how those monies are being spent. So I'm more than happy to send that out to Council later this evening if you'd like.
Yeah, I would be interested. And then also, there was an Arizona, what do you call it, AZ mayor story that seemed to indicate that the legislator, they also, additional $11 million that was set aside for rental assistance on top of the 100 million that we just talked about? And that hasn't been spent. Is that true?
Oh, Mayor, I'm not as familiar with that amount of money, but I imagine that's also on the JLB site, so if I can find that allocation diagram, then I'll be happy to send that as well, but I can't. I can't speak to that at this moment.
Okay, so if you could find that out, that would be appreciated as well. I see that we have, we have the Vice Mayor is next.
Thank you, Mayor. Jack, quick follow-up. That 1.9 billion that we're talking about, the larger amount that was given to the larger cities, what, how long ago was that given out? Do you know the dates?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Shimonie, the amounts that were allocated directly to those larger municipalities and counties, they were able to apply for those directly. So there wasn't a set date, but I believe that we are looking at almost six weeks or more ago that they received those monies directly from the federal treasury. They did not have to go through the governor's administration and apply for those funds. The way the CARES Act was written is that if you were above 500,000 in population, you could apply for them directly from the federal treasury. So that is why they received them so much earlier than any other municipalities or counties in Arizona at this point.
Okay, so they received theirs potentially six weeks ago, and we're still waiting on ours. That's pretty wild to me that state leadership would think that that was at all appropriate. My next question is for Dan Folt. Dan, can you let me know, have there been any, like, larger, denser, typically student housing-focused projects on the radar that have come forward more recently that have maybe changed their tone about building in Flagstaff? I know you said that everything is, you know, moving forward, but I was just curious on specifically these student housing-focused efforts, maybe like, you know, more recent projects stepping forward.
I'm not aware of any projects withdrawing any of their applications in terms of a site plan or a rezoning request, but we can certainly track that. Tiffany Antle, our Planning Director, provides the, what is it? It's a Development Review Status Report. I don't think we've done one for a couple of months. We probably need to update it, but that's a good way to track projects. And if something falls off of there, it would be withdrawn. It's kind of rare that anyone draws anything. We just don't get responses, right? And then maybe 12 months later, we're like, geez, they've never resubmitted. Maybe they're reconsidering, but, yeah, we can track those for you and we'll certainly share anything we find out. We know the projects that are of highest to the community.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. I have a follow-up for Jack. Because I just want to make sure that I understand this. So the question that the Vice Mayor just asked about when it came to the monies that were allocated to the larger cities and counties, so that was Phoenix, Tucson, Mesa, Maricopa County, and Pima County, they got direct allocations from the federal government. That direct allocation, it came from the $2.8 million that was allocated to our state that the governor has control over, or was it a separate application process?
Madam Mayor, so the $2.8 billion that you're referring to is, is, yeah, so it was allocated to the state of Arizona's municipalities and counties, but because those larger counties and municipalities, they exceeded the 500K, they were able to apply directly. So that leftover amount from those, from those five jurisdictions equals the 1.9 billion that is currently left over and that we're seeking, that we're seeking allocation from. Does that make sense?
So the governor never had the $2.8 billion to begin with. There was $2.8 billion that was allocated for the state of Arizona. The larger cities and towns directly applied for the money, and what's left is the 1.9 billion that he actually has control over.
Yes, that's my understanding. And Sarah, please jump in if I'm missing anything.
Okay, because it seems, I mean, it depends on how you word it. It seems like the governor got 1.8 billion, and then the cities and towns applied directly to him, but they didn't because he didn't get the 1 point, the 2.8 billion. There was, there was that amount allocated for the state, and what we're talking about is what's left over after they took their money.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions at this point? Okay, I don't see anymore.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Heidi Hansen, Economic Vitality Director. Just going to kind of review what we already went over with you at the budget retreat, where we had the opportunity to talk to you about what we were going to be doing for our recovery efforts. And since that time, some of the things that you've already approved that are on their way. With arts and sciences, you approved $100,000 Artist Relief Fund that Eliza Kretzman, our Befigations Manager and Arts and Science Manager, is working on. We're also maintaining our annual grant program that we have with Flagstaff Arts Council, where 50 local organizations will basically get grants, I believe at the tune of over $360,000. And then we've applied to the National Endowment for the Arts, our town grants. And if you have questions on that, Eliza can give you some more information. As far as economic development, you approved our adaptive reuse policy to assist the small business. You just approved our business retention, expansion incentive policy. And you also talked, shared that you would allow us to continue with our Innovative Waste Challenge for another year. We love the creativity of our staff where they're going to be sending things out and asking for people to think of their best ways to even interact with personal protective gear in this challenge, some creative ideas that we'd like to look at moving forward. And so I just wanted to briefly share with you that a lot of what you've already approved is in the works and will continue to update you accordingly. Next slide.
We have a question on Ms. Hansen.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mayor.
Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Heidi. My question is this. The monies that have been approved are for the, for the 2021 budget, correct?
I'm going to see if Dave McIntyre or Eliza are on this call. I'm, I'm under the understanding that it is Dave. It's all you, man.
Hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Whelan, David McIntyre, Community Investment Director. Councilmember Whelan, were you speaking specifically to one of the items? There is, most of the funding listed here is in the 2021 budget, but for instance, the business retention and expansion incentive policy is next fiscal year, so that would be available starting July 1.
Okay, and, and understanding that, that so far, these items have moved to where we are tonight, before the budget is approved, are these items still, could they not be funded, say we move from significant to the major? Would, would these items be stopped?
Councilmember, I think that would depend a little on Budget Team's permission. At the moment, we have found savings in other places and feel confident that this type of programming is critical for helping to get the economy back on track and therefore help to return people to work and get revenues coming back into the city programs. So we're actually seeking ways to reduce in other areas and keep these programs funded. That being said, depending on how Budget Team and the Council looks at the recession plan, of course, these programs are funded but have not spent the money yet, so if there was a decision not to allocate those funds to it, that would prevent them from being spent. There's also some hope that we can find additional funds in various places, either through grants or through additional savings to use to expand these programs or to provide other relief that the community has requested for your consideration.
Thank you, Dave.
My pleasure.
Thanks, Dave. Next slide. And then the library, basically, they just are working to be on hand to answer questions and to offer resources. I think well before this pandemic, they were already offering computer time and services to our community and our business partners, and they will continue to offer those resources, even if they have to do those virtually. We have, the city is working on a reentry plan, and the library will be part of that reentry plan. And that will, that will include support service from this library staff. It will look at programs, and it will definitely look at computer time for our businesses, and you will be made well aware of what they can access. The airport, as you know, last week and then moving into June 2nd, we are still working on lease abatements for our tenants. Like we shared last week, we're working on the CARE grant, the 18.1 million and the uses. And again, that will be brought back to you at another council meeting. And the airport, most importantly, I think at this point, is still working with Discover Flagstaff on marketing the airport so that we can hopefully increase inflaments. We've seen a little bit of an uptick recently, I believe about a 4% uptick, which is nice to see. And we're also going to be including our rental car tenants in some of our marketing because we know that they've been hit so badly with what has happened during the pandemic. So as we get some of this moving ahead, we'll be happy to share that with you at a later date. But again, I wanted you to know, I know that it's very pressing for you to know what's going to go on with the 18.1 million, and that will be coming back to you. Next slide.
I think we have a comment or a question, Ms. Hansen.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. Heidi, going back to the library, have, have we, it would seem to me that the discussion we had about extending our Wi-Fi leased out to the parking lot, whether that be City Hall, whether that be the library, has anything been considered to move on that or set that as a priority for our community?
Mayor, Councilmember Whelan, I don't believe, and if you are Jared, our library, Jared Tolman, our library director, if you're on the line, please let us know.
Heidi?
Thanks, Jared.
Yeah, I'm here. Councilman Willier, we are currently working on that. We're working with the CARES Act to get some funding to be able to get the hardware in place so that we can get that extended out. For example, our Eastside Library, currently you can access it in the parking lot. That hardware will make it easier for us to share it farther into the parking lot. And for the main library, we'll be working to get it to surround the entire library so that patrons, either in the parking lot or who have parked on the street, can access that service. But we definitely are working with those CARES Act to get the funding to be able to put that in place.
Thank you so much. I wonder if a partnership with Poconino Community College might also be another avenue, at least for the Eastside Libraries. But Jared, I'm so excited that you're working on it, so thank you.
Councilmember Whelan, that's an excellent idea, and we'll definitely look into that. Next slide. Next slide. And then I just wanted to share again, um, with tourism, we are continuing to message the destination, um, not just to our potential visitors, but definitely to our locals so that everybody knows how to, um, regardless if they're staying and they're playing, that we have messaged that we want them to stay play distance and wear a mask responsibly. Um, we actually have, um, shared with you before at several other meetings that our major message to the visitor is to adhere to the CDC healthcare guidelines, um, to look at business recommendations and hours because they're all different and definitely to adhere to fire restrictions. And so you will see that if, um, you were looking at any of our print or digital, uh, marketing, that all of that is shown on that. We're also letting our locals know that we all, um, love Flagstaff. It's our home. And that again, we want them to continue to adhere to the CDC guidelines and then to stay play distance and mask responsibly as well. And then one of the things I needed to let all of you know, um, I reached out to ADOT, um, to a contact that I have, um, to ask if there was a way that they would message some of their boards leaving Flagstaff, um, leaving Phoenix, going north and into Flagstaff, asking for them to, um, wear a mask. They have actually some fun little boards every once in a while. I don't know if you, if you've noticed them, but they, sometimes they do a Star Wars theme or, or whatever. And so, um, we, we suggested some titles and some, some marketing. Um, this past Memorial Weekend, they were already, um, had what they were going to put on those message boards, um, figured out as a, as a organization. But I've asked for them to please pass this along for any of the, um, you know, upcoming weekends, since we know that we do have visitation that comes here as well as for any upcoming holidays. So I will continue to, um, try to work on that angle. And as soon as I get more information or if I have success, I will, um, I will be happy to share that with you. One of the things I also wanted to share, and then I will turn this over, is that on our marketing efforts, we've been doing an amazing job at negotiating our contracts for better rates. And, um, the reason I share this with you is that most destination marketing organizations, which are referred to as a DMO, um, were canceling all of their advertising during this pandemic. And we chose not to do that because we knew that when we went through the Great Recession back in 2008, 2009, that when we didn't do that, we had more success rebounding faster and we had a, um, less of a decrease in occupancy. It was about a 3% decrease where all of the other states, um, cities in, in Arizona had double-digit decreases. So instead, we chose to, um, market the destination, but with a safety and responsible message. And that is what we're currently still doing. Um, and so by doing that, we were able to not only, um, negotiate our contracts for better rates, but we're getting a better return on our investment because we are not having to fight the market. We're actually taking the market over. And then because of this, um, contracts for better rates, Lori Pappas, our marketing and media relations manager, as well as Trace Ward, our convention and visitor bureau director, have been able to get us a lot of different added value. And I'm not gonna go through the laundry list of it, but if you're interested, I'd be happy to share that in a separate memo or something. But I just wanna say hats off to this team for messaging, um, um, the message not only to our locals, to our visitors, but to, um, help us with saving money while we're doing it.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Dan Muslin here with the Police Department. So during the pandemic, we continued.
Sorry, I apologize, Chief. Uh, my, my computer's on mute. We have questions and comments from Ms. Hanson before we move forward. Uh, we have, uh, the Vice Mayor first, followed by Ms. Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Hanson, for your work. Incredible. And I'm so glad that we have you to help us get through this. Um, my question is, I was just on the Discover Flagstaff website. I visited, visited it about a week ago as well. And it's great, of course, as we all know, but I'm just wondering if we can integrate more images of folks doing social distancing or wearing masks and just better integrate imagery into that messaging on our, on our website.
Mayor Vice Mayor, definitely. I will, uh, speak to, uh, no Trace is on the call and I will make sure that Trace and I speak to the team tomorrow. And, uh, we work on that. I know that we've integrated more of that on, um, the print ads and the digital that we're already doing, but we'll make it more, um, evident on the website as well.
Great. I really appreciate that. And then my next question, I think, might be for State Manager. Are we utilizing our, uh, I don't know the official term, but the police signs to communicate?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Can you give me a little bit more clarity on the question?
Yeah, the, uh, those like, those signs that we've used in the past to communicate about, you know, different things in, in, in the community, but, um, to utilize them to, say, you know, wear a mask, social distance, di- different things around best practices.
Well, uh, but thank you for the question. I don't think we've used the variable message boards to that effect, to my knowledge. But the messaging on what you just asked has been, uh, pretty, uh, comprehensive across the spectrum. And there's a lot of information going out on that. I just don't think we've used the variable message boards.
Okay, um, obviously I understand I'm, I'm one of seven and we operate as a council, but, um, I, I see the value in it both down in Phoenix, as Heidi was talking about, and then also up here. Um, so I would like to see us consider that as a council. Maybe we'll talk about it during our COVID update. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we have, uh, Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. I would support that too. I think we did have that as a conversation and, and those boards were asked about. Um, if we could use some, Heidi, a question for you. Um, are we trying to attract large groups at all? Or are we staying away from those, uh, for this time period?
Mayor Councilmember Whelan, we are following CDC guidelines and so we are not trying to attract large groups. Um, our biggest messaging that we do is outdoor activity and we're asking for people that if they were to come up here, um, when we talk about staying and playing and distancing and wearing a mask, we are asking them to do that even with the people that they're traveling with. Um, the reason why we've asked them to look at business recommendations and hours is because we know some of our businesses will not permit people to go into their location without being masked. So we don't want them to be disappointed and not be able to go in and find, um, something that they were looking for or to pick up the, that food that they were hoping to pick up because they weren't paying attention to curbside recommendations. So basically, we're, we aren't able to keep up, um, how all the businesses are, um, running their business. So we're asking for them to sometimes call ahead to look at, um, the Downtown Business Alliance website and, um, get as much information as they can if our website doesn't have all of it. Um, so until we're told differently, um, basically we're, we know that they're going to come in some capacity. And so we're asking them to do things safely and we're asking them to do things, um, mainly outdoors. And it's still, we still have the carry out and settle in policy that we're, that we're, um, that we're messaging. And, um, so those are the things. As other attractions open up and they tell us, um, what their guidelines are, we will be more specific, for instance, with Lowell Observatory and those attractions. And Trace, if you're on the line and you wanna share anything, please do.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, Mayor and, uh, Councilmember Whelan, this is Trace Ward, CVB Director. Um, we, we are, 95% of our business is a leisure customer in, in, uh, in good times. And that's even more so the case. I would say it's 100% of our business now. Right now, uh, there is no meetings happening and the bus tour business is not happening either. So it's, it's 100% leisure that we're marketing to. Thank you.
Thank you, Trace.
I wanna go to Mr. Tatter.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to just step in a little bit and, and try to see if we can refocus the conversations. While the, the information is, is great, uh, we're going a lot into the operational, uh, activity, uh, which is more than we were expecting for tonight. We're really just looking to, uh, talk about how we are reacting in this economy uh, from a high level to give you a perspective from some of the areas of our organization and not really getting into the, the heavy detail. So, uh, I'm just looking to, to see if we can, uh, get through the next two slides so we can get back to discussion, the recession planning, uh, going forward. So, uh, thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Councilman Dan Muslin again with the Police Department. So we continue to staff our walking beat daily during the pandemic. We increased our woods watch and our fire prevention patrols. And we also increased our bicycle and walking patrol throughout the city, mainly in and around the parks and playgrounds to make sure that the city infrastructure was good. Um, keeping people off it when everything was really closed and making sure it wasn't damaged. That's really about all I have from the Police Department. So I will turn it over to Sustainability unless there's any questions.
I don't see any.
Great, thank you, Dan. Mayor and City Council Nicole Antonopoulos Sustainability Manager. Continuing the conversation on local recovery efforts. The Sustainability Team is hard at work responding to our community and organizational needs. I wanna highlight some of our efforts in response to the impacts of the pandemic. As mentioned during the budget retreat, Sustainability staff will work with all city divisions to ensure recovery actions consider climate action, resiliency planning, and equity. If funding becomes available, Sustainability has a number of shovel, shovel-ready projects for consideration in energy and infrastructure, transportation, food systems, and community health. While already in our work program, we are continuing efforts to stabilize and reduce municipal energy expenditures. For example, we will be releasing an energy performance contract solicitation next month. And our partnership with APS continues and has allowed us to install 125 kilowatt solar parking canopy system on the Naeseck Campus. This system will be owned by APS and the energy produced will go into the grid. However, the city will save nearly $4,000 a year on its energy expenditures at the site. We also continue to negotiate quarterly with the Arizona Power Authority to purchase about 160,000 kilowatt hours of additional energy from Hoover Dam so we can meet our full energy allotment. And this allows us to incur greater savings. Our estimated savings by the end of the water delivery year in October will be about $20,000. While this is a tremendous amount of money, I think we can all agree that right now, every penny counts. Sustainability staff is assisting with the Recovery Roundtable Series and will be hosting a food availability discussion in June, which will highlight resources for receiving food assistance, donating to food distribution centers, community gardens, gardening educational resources, and, and other items. Also in June, staff will host a waste management discussion, which will include information on proper disposals and recycling of, um, personal protective equipment, reducing food waste, avoiding, avoiding litter as we have seen a significant increase in PPE litter around our community and opportunities to recycle correctly. Next slide. As shared with council during the budget retreat, Sustainability is redirecting funds and staff time in response to the crisis. We will accelerate food waste prevention and recovery initiatives as discussed with you last week. And we are working diligently to assist Flagstaff community members to reduce expenses surrounding energy and food. We continue to foster partnerships and identify funding opportunities to help infuse these resources into the community as fast as possible. Next slide. Thank you. Council, do you have any questions for staff?
Council, do you have any questions? Okay, I do not see any. Thank you.
Hey, um, so next, next section we wanna start talking about is, is what's the path forward? Uh, should council approve us moving to a significant level of the economic recession plan? Uh, first and foremost, budget adoption is needed. And what budget adoption does is sets our maximum allowable expenditures that the organization could spend in a given year. However, we understand that the recession plan, uh, layers on top of that and helps guide us through times when revenues do not meet expectation. And it's adaptable throughout the year, uh, to make sure we're not, uh, spending more than the resources we have in a given year. So we do seek your approval in June, uh, with the adopt budget as a proposed. There'll be a lot of work with a leadership budget team, uh, employee advisory committee, uh, over the next, uh, several weeks to develop recommendations. We don't, we have some guidelines and some action items that, uh, we have to consider within a significant level. Uh, but we want to make sure, uh, we're working as a team moving forward and developing recommendations that are best for the organization as a whole. Uh, continue to focusing the effort on shifting expenses are important for our balancing methods. Uh, making the enterprise funds self-sustaining, uh, utilizing the airport grants, uh, to help reduce the impacts on general fund and other revenue opportunities like the Wata Land Fire Management Fee to fund those types of programs. We are gonna continue to use the priority-based budget in our decision-making. We have a, uh, a, we went through a process in the last year, so we have some data that we can use, but we are gonna, uh, update that with the more current data and go through the process of reviewing, uh, our programs, uh, that we have in the organization. And we'll be using that for our decision-making as well. Of course, continuing monitoring of revenues as well as expenses is gonna be needed, uh, from the, the finance team and the budget team going forward. And again, this will be an adaptable plan over the next fiscal year, you know, with quarterly updates, uh, making sure that our targets are being met, um, when we're making these, uh, decisions. Uh, next slide. So again, uh, with a lot of work to be done, uh, these are some of the, um, action items that are set forth in the significant stage of the, um, economic recovery plan. I'm, I'm not gonna walk through all of these with you, but, you know, there are many items here. There's, uh, 10 or so within this plan, as well as the measures under the moderate stage will be maintained as well. Uh, how they are used and, and how they'll go into effect will be a, a conversation with, um, city manager, budget team, and leadership in E C going forward. The information I'm providing on these slides are really just provided as illustrative, uh, information for council. And this is related to the general fund numbers. But again, these not, these numbers, these actions are adaptable for the organization as we move forward. Uh, so just, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna take all the time to go through each of these measures, but, uh, our finance team, Brandy Suda and them have kinda tried to put up a pencil and a, and a number to what we could see in savings should we start, uh, putting these measures in place. Um, so this is the first, uh, group of items. And if you go to next slide is the remaining action items that are potentially available for us in the significant stage. Uh, in this illustration, there's about 6 million, not 6 million, sorry, 3 million, uh, identified as potential, but there's a lot to be determined and decisions to be made as far as the organization, especially when we talk about reducing services, programs, levels of services, and so forth. Uh, those numbers will, will come forth, uh, at a later time. But that's all I wanted to kind of just touch base on the significant stage and the action items that are illustrated for council should you adopt that resolution. And I believe, uh, City Mayor Clifton wanted to speak to the, the colonel?
Yes, the ma- Mayor, um, there may be other questions from, uh, council members and I would. There may be other questions from council members, and I would yield to those. I can speak a little bit later.
Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just had a question for Rick on the previous slide, then the slide that we're looking at now, which was the last bullet point, implementation of hiring freeze on all but essential health, safety, well positions. So if there need to be concerning, you know, police, fire, you're still hiring those positions as needed.
Yes, I believe we'll take the focus and strategically replace vacancies within those parts of the organization.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
City Manager?
Madam Mayor, Council. So on these last two slides, Rick has presented a number of the action items you see referenced in the significant stage, and many of these will be implemented. The budget team is already at work trying to, as Rick mentioned, pen to paper, pencil to paper, and figure out what the savings could be. At the same time, we'll continue to monitor revenues very closely. We currently, to Councilmember Odegaard's question, we are under recruitment freeze except for the essential positions. We also do have a cost of living adjustment in the budgets scheduled for July 1st. I have asked the leadership team and the employee advisory committee to consider a recommendation to council to defer that cola for a little bit later in the year until revenues would better justify that adjustment. That was met with considerable discussion and a lot of reservation, but I think much to the credit of the EAC and the leadership team, there's a desire to... We all do what we can, and so there's a desire to recommend that that would be deferred, not indefinitely, but perhaps with a regular monitoring of the revenue situation. And as soon as things start to justify that, we would like to implement that as budgeted. There's also reference to a drawdown of reserves. I would hope that council would consider that as somewhat of a last resort here. I would rather urge that we do our part to try to save dollars any way we can, absent the need to dip into our reserves, which really need to remain intact. I think that's about all I wanted to comment on. I'm available to answer any questions, as are the rest of the staff, and I can see that there are some questions.
The Vice Mayor followed by Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. And this is... I had a question for Nicole, actually, and I was wondering, you know, through the lens of a cap and, you know, seeing us become a high-functioning government and doing our best to be resilient, I was just curious what your thoughts were in terms of how we could be working and moving forward as a city with those values in mind. You know, as we're going into the significant stage with all the things that are on the table, what were your thoughts were?
Vice Mayor and Council, thank you for the...
Hello?
Hello?
I can hear you, Mayor, but I can...
I can't hear Ms. Antonopoulos. Nicole?
Well, that's too bad. Guess we can come back to it.
Yeah. Okay, Ms. Whelan?
Thank you very much. I'm wondering, has there been consideration to increase our fund balances at all?
No, not at this time.
And can you tell me why we wouldn't...
I lost connection for a moment.
Why we wouldn't look at that at this time?
Well, I believe if, you know, I think 20% is a good recommended fund balance for the organization and the general fund. We've ran that through the Government Finance Officers Association model, and it does fall into that range as appropriate levels. Definitely, there's something to be said as we may, as we come out of this, maybe we do want to bump that up further for the future, but it's hard to really increase your fund balance while you're putting in measures for a significant recession plan.
Well, what I was speaking to, Rick, were the other funds where we have them at 10%.
Okay. All right. That wasn't clear then.
No, I think, remember me, I'm the 20% going, wow, is it that high? But I'm grateful we have it now, so, thank you.
Yeah, and our Water Services has a higher fund balance for their water policy. But yeah, it's definitely something we could look at as we come out of this process in our five-year plans, is maybe we do need to make those a little bit higher for those other funds.
Okay. The other comment that I had, and this is to city manager, it's to staff, it's to everyone, I am so grateful that you're willing to go back and revisit the colas. You know, I was just having a very difficult time of trying to be able to justify a cola at this time and yet look at, in the next breath, almost losing people's employment and health insurance. So I am so grateful. We do have a wonderful team here, and, boy, I just want to say my gratitude to everyone's work, so thank you around that cola.
Let's go back to Ms. Antonopoulos.
Great, I apologize. Can folks hear me now?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. And I'm not sure how much I was able to... I'm not sure when I lost connection, but I'll just hopefully recapture what I mentioned. But I do believe, based on my experience from the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act and the Great Recession, I do believe that there is an opportunity to provide a consistent approach for decision-making, and I'm considering just the shovel-ready projects that staff have been working diligently on in preparation of potential funding opportunities, and if we have an opportunity to identify impacts specifically related to the Climate Action Plan, but also beyond that, and those are things that, again, as carryover from our funding, where we did look at workforce development, we looked at equally as energy savings and so forth. So if we have an opportunity to provide some consistency for not only the organization but our community, I think that there's a framework there that would benefit all.
Okay. Thank you, Nicole. I guess my only follow-up is I'd like to learn more about what that looks like, but maybe now's the right time to dive into that.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Aslan?
Mayor, I just have a question. We're five hour, five and a half hours into this meeting, and previous to COVID, when we were three and a half hours into a meeting, we would call for a motion to proceed. I'm wondering if we need to establish some sort of rule like that now that our meetings are starting at 3:00 p.m. and not 6:00 p.m.?
We might need to. I think that that's a question for legal.
The way it's written in the rules, Mayor and Council, I appreciate you raising the issue, Councilmember Aslan, and it's, it was basically for the lateness at night. However, if the council wants to...
Getting pretty late.
The council wants to consider an amendment to the rules of procedure to say after a certain amount of time, not just an hour at night, you can do that. It's not in the rules right now.
Okay, well, I recognize the irony of drawing out the length of this meeting by bringing this up, and I suspect we'll be able to wrap things up here fairly efficiently from this point, but I just wanted to raise the concept.
Cool. Okay. I think we had council discussions throughout the item. Now we're going to talk about the resolution. And staff's recommended action is that we consider and adopt Resolution Number 2020-33. This is a resolution of Flagstaff City Council directing the city manager to implement remedial measures set forth in the 2020 Economic Recession Plan on significant stage and the providing of an effective date. I see that Mr. Clifton has a comment.
An attempt to wrap up as what was just suggested by Councilmember Aslan and to bring this discussion for you, Council. I think it's been a very comprehensive discussion tonight. Thank you for giving us your audience. I know we covered a lot of ground, and I do apologize that we got off track a little bit from the recession planning, but I think all the information was relevant. That said, I would like to briefly comment on Councilmember Whelan's last two comments, and I thought they were right on point. The first one on the 20% fund balance, I would echo what Mr. Tatter said, that there... I would like to see nothing more than council have that discussion about increasing the fund balances. Probably need to do that after we emerge from this economic downturn. I think that would be quite appropriate, noting that, yes, we are in the range, but we probably could do a little bit better. The other comment about, in response to the suggestion that we defer the cola, thank you, Councilmember Whelan, for your comments. I assure you that a lot of employees are listening with high interest to this conversation, and I want to impress upon council that this was not an easy discussion for the employees to have. We would like to proceed with the resolution, enter into the moderate, pardon me, the significant stage of the recession plan, start implementing these measures. On the subject of the cola, we would like to have a regular check-in on that, probably no less than every three months, so that when the time is right and when things are back on track, it be given a high priority. With that, Madam Mayor and Council, I'm able to answer any questions that you have regarding the action tonight. Otherwise, I think you have had considerable discussion, and it's been a very well-informed conversation. Thank you.
Ms. Salas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I make a motion, I just want to send city manager and staff and everyone who presented tonight, big grateful hearts for everything you do for the city. The economic recession plan, you know, captures our path, you know, toward a resilient, you know? City and economy, you know, that enhances our organization's fiscal stability and resourcefulness. You know, the recession plan, you know, illustrate how we, as an organization, will be able to survive, adapt, and thrive through this rapidly changing economic landscape, as I call it, the city manager. So I move to read Resolution Number 2020-33 by title only.
Second, Jim McCarthy.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Salas and a second by Mr. McCarthy to read Resolution Number 2020-33 by title only. Is there any further discussions? I do want to say something because I think it's important that this is said, and I want to start out by saying that I realize that this is very stressful for everybody, that we have been in the meeting since 1:00 our meeting started, and that just the issue of COVID-19 and talking about a recession is very stressful. I feel that I need to just remind everybody that not all the members on council have been through this before, and that there might be a reason why council members are asking questions about operations, because we are getting ready to approve something that's going to dictate the terms in which we move forward with resources. And so I understand that some of us have more expertise, and maybe there are questions asked about operations that would be better asked in a different setting or in a different meeting, but then I would ask for that meeting to happen or to be agendized so that council members can ask those questions. Because again, we have a responsibility, we're moving forward and saying how we are going to allocate resources, and we know there's not enough resources. So I think sometimes council members are asking questions that have to do with operations because they're trying to make sure that they allocate those resources in the best way possible. And so with that being said, I don't think I see any other comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
The Resolution of the Flagstaff City Council directing the city manager to implement remedial measures set forth in the 2020 Economic Recession Plan, significant stage, and providing for an effective date.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2020-33?
Move to adopt, Salas.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Salas and a second by Mr. Aslan to adopt Resolution Number 2020-33. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We are now down to item number four. This is informational items to and from Mayor, Council, City Manager, and future agenda item requests. We're going to start with the Vice Mayor today.
You know, I had a feeling you were going to call me first, and I don't have too much to share. Yeah, I guess.
Thank you.
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Aslan?
Yeah, just briefly, I do have a fair item request. I would request that council to add lobbying for a full and permanent funding for the Land and Water Conservation Fund to the council's federal legislative agenda.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
I just want to say that the fair that was just requested, I very strongly support. That's all I have for tonight.
Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Two items. This Thursday, the Housing Commission will be meeting, and I want to thank Councilmember McCarthy for being the liaison for the Housing Commission. I also ask if either the city manager or one of the deputy managers can also attend that meeting as maybe at least listening in or providing comment, because one of the items that they will be discussing was concerning the bond that's not going to happen for 2020 concerning housing bond. I think most of the commissioners are, you know, okay at this point, but I think it would be important, maybe one of the city management, just to reassure that, you know, if there is any questions of why or things like that from the commission members that will be meeting on Thursday. And then one request is concerning that public comment concerning House Bill 2912 concerning COVID. I'm not sure if I've seen an email on that, but maybe, I'm not sure if it's a state legislation that's happening at the House down in Phoenix. that's happening at the House down in Phoenix, or if it's a more of a federal legislation, but if maybe someone could just provide a little update to the council body of what that is and what's the meaning of H B, H B 2912. So, thank you. Have a good week.
Ms. Salas?
I have cuddles here laying on my laps throughout the meeting. Cuddles is my best friend's cat that I'm fostering. And I have a fair request that may likely, that may likely warrant an executive session. This has something to do with the Flagstaff Minimum Wage border initiative that was passed by Flagstaff voters in 2016. My fair item is to explore the possibility of adjusting the timeline in furtherance of the initiative, given the growing unemployment rate. And as presented by our city manager to tonight's meeting, the preliminary result of the N A U survey where we have thirty-two businesses, thirty-two percent of businesses have shuttered, and sixty-eight percent of the business are open, are only operating at fifty percent Forty-four percent have laid off or fired or load their employees. So I think it's, you know, the call of the time is to see if we can pursue a council action to adjust the timeline of the minimum wage that's set to effect on January 1st, Thank you.
City attorney?
Mayor, council, and council member Salas, in respect to your request, yes, that will merit an executive session. In fact, I would recommend it before the fair goes any further forward, if that's okay.
I believe that Councilmember Salas asked for executive session before she asked for a fair. Is that correct, Ms. Salas?
Requesting for an executive session toward a possibility of a council, of future council action.
Okay, I can do that executive session for you.
Okay, so we'll have an executive session for city attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Whelan?
Mayor, I have a question about the request. Would that be an expedited fair item or would it be an expedited executive session?
It will be an expedited executive session, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Mayor, I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Mr. Fitchett first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council, to address Councilmember Odegaard's question. I just want to give some brief background on the House bill that he mentioned. It is House Bill 2912, and it was something that was proposed in the state legislature, the House specifically, and its short title is COVID-19 Civil Liability Evidence. And that bill, the brief summary of it is it would waive civil liability for a variety of entities, and it is intended to protect those entities against lawsuits related to COVID-19. The liability would not be waived if the entity acted with gross negligence, and the other portion of the bills, it would lessen penalties for entities that violate the governor's executive orders related to COVID-19. So although this was passed out of the House before they signed, signed died on Thursday, it passed 3129, it was transmitted to the Senate. They did not hear this bill before they adjourned earlier this afternoon, but there is the potential that this bill could be brought back during a special legislative session this summer, which is why I've requested council weigh in and let me know if their position is to support, oppose, or remain neutral on this bill. And Ms. Councilmember Odegaard, I've attached a link to the bill. It's just a short page and a half, two pages, that if you'd like to read in depth, and then if you have questions outstanding after that, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
City manager?
Madam Mayor, I have nothing further. Thank you.
I did have one thing. I actually want to request an executive session about House Bill 2912, and I would like to ask for the council consideration to take a stance against that bill, but I have some legal questions.
Hello?
Thank you. And so with that, I do think we've gotten to the end of our agenda tonight, so I would go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.